All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight for the city council meeting. It is 5:01, and I will call this meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Erin, can we get a roll call? Councilmember Borelli?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Here.
Councilmember Nell?
Here.
All right, that brings us on to ceremonial matters, and we have none at this time. Item four, closed session report. City Attorney Ibrahimih.
Thank you, Mayor. The council did meet in closed session today on a workers' compensation claim filed by Mr. Neri. The council provided direction to staff.
All right, thank you. Item six, or sorry, item five, adoption of the agenda. And with this one, I would actually request to make a couple changes to item six. I would like to move 6.2, the proclamation recognizing Edwin Matthews, up before 6.1. And I would like to add 6.3, a brief update from Rebecca Neve, City Engineer, on the Trip to Green.
I'll second that and move the adoption of the agenda.
Second. All right, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. So now we are moving on to item six, 6.2. And it is a pleasure to present this proclamation, recognizing Edwin Matthews for his 50 years of service to the Rotary Club of Placerville. Whereas Edwin Matthews joined the Rotary Club of Placerville on August 1st, 1972, and attended his first Rotary meeting at the Blue Bell Cafe in downtown Placerville. And whereas this meeting led to a lifetime of service to Placerville and the surrounding community. And whereas Ed was involved in multiple projects around the city, including projects at Benham Park, development at Bennett Park, fundraising and creation of Joe's Skate Park at the fairgrounds, the Welcome to Placerville signs, the caboose restoration, Lumpston Park development, Main Street bench placement and restoration, and continued development of Rotary Park. And whereas Ed served as president of the Rotary Club of Placerville in the 1979-1980 Rotary year, and was membership chair from 2018 to 2021. And whereas, in addition to Rotary, Ed has served on the board of the Boys and Girls Club, as board member and past president of the Marshall Hospital Board of Trustees, as past president of the Eldorado County Chamber of Commerce, and as treasurer of the Episcopal Church of Placerville. Now therefore I, Kara Taylor, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Placerville, do hereby recognize Edwin Matthews for his dedicated service to the Rotary International, the Rotary Club of Placerville, and the city of Placerville. And I'd like to welcome you up to the podium to say a few words, if you'd like.
I applaud my family.
Absolutely.
Except for Sandy. Well, I had a speech written, but you just covered everything. But, listen, it's been my pleasure and honor to be a Rotarian for these 50 years. I'm much too young to have served this long, but so be it, that's it. Just a little bit of interest. This Rotary Club was founded in 1944, and the first president of Rotary was Harry Jespersen. And a few of you know who Harry Jespersen was, but he owned Cash Mercantile, which used to be downstairs. I think it had something to do with J.C. Penney's. Maybe Patty might know that. No? Okay. But Harry was the first president, 1944. I won't read you all the next 78 presidents, but Clyde Curtis was president in 1948. And his name is on the Rotary Park up there, as the Clyde Curtis Rotary Park. Certainly, there's been a lot of distinguished Placerville residents that have been in the club. A lot of them served as president, and it's been my honor to be amongst those. There's one other 50-year member who is not here tonight, and you know him downtown, is Dano Raffetto. Dano, I think, has about 54 years, but he wasn't able to attend tonight. But at any rate, I do thank you for the honor. It's been my pleasure, and I thank my fellow Rotarians who have attended tonight, as well as my family. So, Kara, nice to have met you too.
Absolutely. Thank you for all your service. We are indebted to you for the hard work over these five decades to the city of Placerville. Before I walk down and present the proclamation to you, I want to open this up to my colleagues on the council. They would like to add any comments?
I'd love to. I've known Ed for many years, and I know that his name has popped up on countless occasions, always in good standing. I can't say that about everybody with Rotary, but I know that I have never heard that your name spoken in vain at any time through Rotary. But it is truly an honor to be here and recognize you for the years of service. I know what Rotary does, and it's an amazing organization for this community. They operate quietly in the background on so many things that add beauty and connection and opportunity for our community to gather, and they do it quietly. And they don't do it with a bunch of fanfare. And it is an amazing opportunity for us to have you in our community and have your organization in our community and take care of it in the way you do and love it the way you do. So I truly appreciate what you have done and also what Rotary has done. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Real quick, I would be remiss if I did not bring attention to the board. Chief, can you hold up that board that was brought in to highlight all of the great projects that Edwin Matthews has worked on over the years? All right, continue.
That's a long list, and really, thank you from the bottom of my heart for all of your work and dedication and bringing the family behind you who's also following your footsteps. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, it's my turn. I think I've known Ed since the day he got to town, probably through Vicivio's and come to the Pizza Parlor and through Carl, and on and on and on. We have had lots of fun times together socially and working with different projects around town. And I know I've said it numerous times, everybody's probably getting sick of hearing me say it, but I just can't say it enough that Placerville would be in a whole lot of world of hurt if it weren't for our service clubs and all of our volunteers and all the things that you have done for this city to make us really shine. And I just am very, very appreciative. I know we all are, and just thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to express my appreciation as well. And whatever all my colleagues have said, I mean, the Rotarians always, I mean, whether it's just, you know, driving by on a Saturday morning, seeing somebody out, whether they're picking weeds or have their weed whacker out there, you know, beautifying an area. You know, it goes, it's not something that they're looking for a pat on the back. And Ed, I know you were the same way. So just again, thank you for everything that you've done for the city and will continue to do for the city. So, appreciate it.
Our president, Sarah Schindler, has got us all out there in a couple of weeks. We'll be weed-whacking all along the freeway there and cleaning up around the Welcome to Placerville sign. Another one of our projects.
That's another one where you guys, on a regular basis, do it without any fanfare. I know that Ron Thompson has been out there mowing it when he sees the weeds pop up. You guys have done the lights to make sure it's always well-lit. You plant flowers on a regular basis out there to make sure when people come into the town, they see something beautiful. And, you know, those are things that people just don't know that happen, but that you all do. So it goes well beyond that. Thank you.
Joe, put the sign up.
Thank you.
All right. At this point, we're gonna continue moving on through the agenda. I know that there are a lot of people here in behalf of Edwin Matthews tonight, and you're welcome to stay. We would love it if you did, but you're also welcome to leave if you don't want to sit through the rest of the agenda. So if you would like to do that, I'll pause for a minute to give you time to move around.
I was gonna ask you, Ed, if you're being fined for this. In going through all of the stuff that I've been going through, we found a letter that Kurt Raffetto wrote to my husband in 1973 and drew him a picture. So I just gave it to all.
All right, we will move on to item 6.1, Brief Comments by the City Council. And we'll start with Jackie.
I don't have any.
Okay. Michael?
I just want to thank the police department, Sergeant Pratt, on all the great work for National Night Out. It was another great event in the city. This year, I only got to go to two locations. There's just a lot of questions, a lot of good conversations. So next year, I gotta space my time a little bit better. David, I only got to two, but just kudos to Police Department for, again, and all of our law enforcement brothers and sisters. So, that's it.
All right. Patty?
Well, I have the same. Thank you, National Night Out. You know, I think representation from our law enforcement and fire department and all the different departments was the biggest we've ever had, and it was wonderful. And I know that the folks appreciated seeing all, and a lot of our volunteers, and it was just wonderful. And I know it took a lot of coordination, and I just thank everyone. I got, this year, thank goodness, I had a partner that just said, "We better go. We better go." So I got to go to four places. But thank you again.
All right, thank you, Patty.
All right. We also had a National Night Out probation. Was there probation? And animal control. And so, I mean, it was well-represented by organizations that were also in the county. We do contract with animal control. And probation, you know, is countywide, they don't have any boundaries when it comes to what they do, and they're an independent organization. So they came out and supported our efforts as well. It was, yeah, we had some great conversations with some individuals in their homes and some, a few hot dogs. And a few, yes.
And cookies.
Yes. Yeah, it was a lot of good food and a lot of participation on our community's part. And so it was a lot of good questions, and, you know, there's no bad questions when it comes to what's going on in the city. And I just appreciate the opportunity to be able to chat with people. So that was great. I'm sure we'll be talking about Trip to Green a little bit more. So that was, I spent some time driving around town for that and just checking things out as if I was a person, and I am a person, as if I was not on City Council, just running around town to see what was going on. So, that's awkward. And then a Cal Cities Board meeting, which was very interesting as well. So I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you, Dennis. I would like to echo those comments on National Night Out and thank our police department and our fire chief and Eldorado Fire and all of the partner organizations that participated in that. I live in a pretty new neighborhood, and it was the first neighborhood party that my neighborhood has ever had, which, and it got pretty good turnout. So that was very cool.
They did a great job. It was fun.
You know, it was just cool knowing that, not just all over Placerville, but all over the country, that neighborhoods were having parties like that and being a part of it. It's a really cool event, and thank you for all the hard work that went into it. Trip to Green, I'm gonna let Rebecca do most of the talking on this, but I did have the opportunity to come through Placerville at 3 o'clock on Sunday. I was coming back from camping, and from my experience on the highway, it was smooth sailing, which was great to see, and it looked like at that time it was under control. I know that there's, we've gotten great feedback. I want to encourage people to continue to provide feedback. And when we get to item 6.3, Rebecca can provide that email and contact information for residents to provide their feedback, but it seems like it went really well. Couple more things I want to touch on tonight. As I think everybody knows, the county and the city, in partnership with the city and in response to the city's request for help with our homelessness crisis, have been working on a navigation center plan. And there's been a flyer and a letter circulating lately that has quite a few misleading claims, and I just want the public to be aware. So I'm just gonna go through this really quickly. I don't want to belabor the point. I don't want to lie back and forth about this. I just want to run through it. The first claim, that drug use will be allowed at this navigation center. This is false. There's a zero tolerance policy. The second claim is that Sierra Harm Reduction Coalition will be providing drug paraphernalia at this location. This is false. There's a zero tolerance policy. Claim three, that this will be another homeless encampment. This is false. The shelter beds and belongings will be inside of a building. It will be supervised and monitored 24/7 by professional staff that are also providing wraparound services. Claim four, this facility is being funded by local tax dollars. This is false. This facility is being 100% funded by state and federal grants that can only be used for homelessness and housing-related issues. The alternative plan, the sheriff's plan, cannot be funded by state and federal grants, which means that that plan, if it happened to move forward, would have to be funded entirely with local funds. Claim five, there's a viable alternative option. You know, both the city and the county were fully behind the sheriff's plan when it first came out, until the Board of Supervisor, after further research, determined that it could not be funded with the funds available, and professional service providers were not willing to provide services to it. So unfortunately, it appears that the alternative to the county's navigation plan is not the sheriff's plan, but would be no action, which I think would be a loss for the community, given the amount of hard work and critical need that this facility would address. All right, that's all I'm gonna say on that. Lastly, and this one's hard for me. It is time for candidates to file for the upcoming city council election. And it pains me to announce that I will not be seeking a second term. This is a decision I've been wrestling with for a really long time. And it's been a real struggle because I absolutely love being on this council. It's been such a pleasure working with my colleagues and the city staff. You guys have made me a wiser person. I feel like I've gained so much understanding about how the world works. And I, you know, anyone that's looking, thinking that they might want to throw their hat into the ring, it really is a rewarding experience. My life has just changed so drastically over these last couple of years with the pandemic, and my needs and the needs of my family have changed in ways that were impossible to predict. So I just need to take a little bit of time to have the flexibility in my schedule to pursue opportunities and take care of things that have been on the back burner. So, I will leave it at that. And I'm sure that there'll be more to come and more comments to be made. Oh, one last thing. My term is not over yet. I've got five more months, and there's still things that I am, you know, that I want to see accomplished. And I am 100% committed to being present for the rest of my time on the council. So, I will leave it at that. And turn it over to Rebecca for her Trip to Green update.
That's tough to follow. Good evening, Mayor, council, staff, and the public that's joining us this evening. I wanted to thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak on the Trip to Green project. You know, for a fair amount of us, it's not a new concept. But, you know, not everybody's had an opportunity, you know, everybody's busy with their lives, to be engaged and attend and be aware of this planning effort. So there is a little bit of history. So for those of the folks here that are listening may not be up to date on how we got here. If you'll indulge me for a minute, I'll give you a little bit of a brief outline of how this project actually ended up being developed. Since the 1960s, so almost immediately upon the completion of US 50 through Placerville in its current alignment, it's had significant impacts on our community and our region. In the late 1980s, 1990s, Caltrans actually proposed several solutions to alleviate the congestion through town and the three signals found at Canal Spring and Bedford. They actually, at that time, proposed a depressed freeway and an elevated freeway, which essentially are two bypass options around Placerville. And at that time, the community was not a place where it felt comfortable with supporting such a drastic, permanent, and costly improvement. But we do see, on a regular basis, we see the impacts of highway traffic on our community and our local roads through bypass users. In 2008, Caltrans completed the US 50 Highway Operational Improvements Project, and that added a third eastbound lane that was supposed to serve as an auxiliary lane, which allowed the right turns that you currently enjoy today at Canal and Spring and Center and Bedford. And it also did some additional structural improvements in roadway and frontage, and also some significant sewer main improvements throughout town and around the creek. You know, we went through, in 2019 through 2020, we went through the US 50 Hot Spot Study, and we went through some public outreach effort in that. And public outreach meetings were held in person, and then even after, when everything was shut down, virtually. And then we even dared, on the occasion, to still try to do in-person meetings with stakeholder meetings. So, you know, but at that time, the meetings that were held, it was determined that the community had finally essentially reached their threshold of pain on the congestion on local roads, and they were now ready to try something. But we didn't know what that something would be. But it was clear that the impacts from Apple Hill and recreational traffic had become too much for our little community to bear. The congestion also has real impacts on emergency response times and routes for police, fire, and medics. On a busy Apple Hill fall day, it's almost impossible to get a fire truck through downtown Placerville. The team then started to look at what could be done, and what we had to work with was what we had on hand. So we have three signals in place, right? So the team comprised of the Eldorado County Transportation Commission, and I'm here joined this evening by Executive Director Woodrow DeLorean, and Caltrans, District 3, and the city, we did discuss the signal timing, you know, and that's actually a question we've heard of a lot. Well, why don't they just hold the signals green longer? All right, let's try that. So what did that look like? You know, because Caltrans, to their, you know, benefit and to their, you know, credit, they've been trying to, you know, mess with the signal timing for decades. And what that means is they actually had to hit the sweet spot on where they could allow the signals to stay green as long as they could, which, for everybody's information, it's 120 seconds, two minutes, before you had cross-traffic starting to run red lights and causing safety issues. So they played with that timing for years, and they got to a place where they said, "That's as much as we can do, and we've tuned that up as much as we can." And then that's when we said, "Well, what if we stop the cross-traffic temporarily?" So that was where the proof-of-concept project, known as Trip to Green, was born. And the initial efforts of Trip to Green were underway when the Calder fire came. The Calder fire started on August 14th, and on the 17th, Camino and Pollock Pines were evacuated. And to see that volume of traffic come down the hill was sobering, to say the least. And I received a phone call from our beloved chief, who is sitting in the EOC. And everybody who knows Chief Wren knows he's calm, cool, and collected. And there was an octave in his voice that made me take him very seriously. And so when he said, "Hey, we need to get those lights green now," and so we did. We called Caltrans. We'd already been working on a game plan at that point. And Caltrans, as a true partner, they showed up within an hour and a half. They had people positioned at each signal, and we flipped them green for the evacuation. We called the local contractor that we know and trust, and they set up traffic control and stopped the side traffic. And we were able to do the evacuation. You know, it was an inconvenience to the local streets, but in the greater scheme of things, it got people through when they needed to in an emergency. And that was actually, we had a resounding amount of compliments and praise for that effort. A lot of anxiety was alleviated that day when the lights turned green. So now, you know, when we went through the evacuation, we got to a place where we said, "Okay, well, you know, now it's 2021, we have a fire going on, there's not gonna be a whole lot of recreational traffic heading to Tahoe with this fire going on." So we postponed the planned Trip to Green effort that would have been last fall. And, which was a good thing in a lot of ways, because it allowed us to, you know, take a little bit more time to methodically think through some things. And, you know, try as we might, we try to think of everything, but there's always gonna be something that's missed. And so when we, recognizing, you know, there's always a factor, no matter what we do, for an element of human error or unforeseen conditions, we talked to Caltrans about doing three weekends, and we suggested the first weekends of August, September, and October. And the intention of that was August would capture some of the last of the recreational summer traffic and heading into fall, and coincidentally, it happened to be the weekend before school started. The first weekend of September is Labor Day, which is a very impactful holiday for our community, local road-wise. And then the third is the first weekend of October, and October is what marks, you know, dead center of fall recreational traffic and Apple Hill traffic. Some folks have, you know, wondered, you know, "Why are we doing this?" And actually, I have a little list of questions that I've seen come up over the last, I'd say, six months, but definitely a higher volume in the last couple of days. So, you know, "Why are we doing this project, and how long will it last?" I just kind of covered that. We are currently doing this project for three weekends this year. There is not any planned effort nor funding to do it beyond that. And as I mentioned, the project spans the first weekends of August, September, and October, and it goes from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And the question that comes along after that, "Well, why is it from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.?" Well, that's what the traffic volume numbers support. So traffic picks up pretty good between 8:00 and 9:00. It peaks out between about 11:00 and 2:00, and then it drops off towards the afternoon consistently, Friday, Saturday, and Sundays, especially on recreational weekends, or like a Labor Day weekend. So with that in mind, and understanding the level of effort that it took to do traffic control for the evacuation, we knew that we would have to have traffic control for all the side streets and set that up. And we had to do it in a safe manner where there wasn't a huge volume of traffic. And so we start mobilizing out around 6:00, between 6:00 a.m. and 7:00 a.m., kind of depending upon what the day called for. And then we would have everything set up no later than 8:00, but at 8:00, the lights get flipped, which means, you know, nothing gets done instantaneously. Wouldn't that be nice? But it takes about 55 minutes to set up and take down. So, all things considering, it's a pretty fast operation for that level of traffic control. And I was actually really impressed on Sunday night, they took down in 46 minutes. So they're improving. We're already showing some revisions that are turning out to improve efficiency, too. The other question we've gotten is, "Why is Canal Street the only one that's closed?" So, you know, Trip to Green, you know, does close off access to Canal. And I want to recognize the fact that the folks that live between Canal and B Street, on Canal, between B Street and US 50, they are in a tough spot. And we will be making some revisions even to the detour and the signage there. I think it was a little confusing this weekend, and we certainly saw some of that. So we have some room for improvement, and we're going to address that, too, in the next iteration. But why was Canal Street closed? Well, Canal Street, as you're approaching it on Highway 50 from the east, headed westbound, does not have adequate space on US 50 for an acceleration-deceleration space. And so it's really imperative that drivers either be slow enough or that there actually be a signal in place that stops the traffic from turn, that would allow the right turn movements on and off. And then one question we got was, "Okay, well, if this is supposed to go..." to go from 8:00 to 8:00, why were the lights flipped back normally early on, or normal, early on Saturday and Sunday? Well, 8:00 PM is the latest we'll go. The reason why we flipped them a little earlier is because the volumes were quite low, in so much as we actually pulled all the signal data and the radar data from Caltrans. Huge thank you to Caltrans, too. They were awesome. They were physically present in the field the entire time, both days. They just have been a phenomenal partner on this, and really appreciate them. So we did traffic count data through our PD radar, speed feedback trailers, and we also got some data from Caltrans. And the traffic volumes were around 38,000 cars, which we normally see 49,000 cars per day. So it was lower. And so, and that was actually a comment we started kind of noticing in the field, too. Even the Caltrans guys were like, gosh, it feels kind of light today. We did have a total of, at Canal Street, we had one preemption. For those of you that don't know what preemption is, it's the optocom, when our fire or medics click the little button and flip the lights green in the north-south direction, which we still allow it as an available option, because emergency response and safety is actually our number-one form of metrics in determining, in determining if this project's been successful or not. On Spring Street, we had 11 preemptions. Ironically, 11 of them were for the eastbound direction, which was hilarious, because they could still go eastbound already. So that was kind of fun. And then on Bedford, we had 15 preemptions. So there was no restriction whatsoever to emergency response during that time period, and we were pretty happy about that. But some things that did, you know, kind of, we had to look into was speed enforcement. Highway, Highway 50 through town is posted at 40 miles an hour. And for those of us that came into town and saw the PD speed radar trailer, and then the immediate onslaught of brake lights in front of them, know that hardly anybody travels the posted 40. I want to extend a huge thank you to PD, to Joe, to all the sergeants on duty, all the officers. You guys were phenomenal. I just, I really appreciated the presence, and it kept the speeds safe, and just thank you very much. And so a few things also that came out of that was, you know, so then you look at like what actually classifies enforcement. So one thing we put out on social media was to remind everybody that this is considered a construction zone. And how is something determined a construction zone? It's determined by two things, by appropriate signage and heartbeats on the highway. We had every intersection manned. We wanted every single one of those folks to go home to their families that night. So that necessitates the, the speed decrease and the enforcement. 40 miles an hour is not an unheard-of speed for construction zones, especially on the highway. It's actually sometimes even lower, can go down as low as 25 miles an hour. But we felt just maintaining the posted speed was a good place to start, and it was good. We did notice that, you know, folks traveling through, they did tend to pick up speed right as they got through it, which made it somewhat difficult for some folks trying to turn right onto Spring, or even folks coming into town. I believe one of the numbers from the PD trailer had around 83 miles an hour coming into town from the mosquito side, so double the speed limit. So that's not safe for anybody, especially not for a highway that has two at-grade crosswalks. So. And then the other question we've gotten is, how have you, how have you reached out to the businesses on Main Street, and what have their impacts been? So on, I believe it was, I want to say July 18th, our beloved mayor and city manager walked in about 102 degrees, and Woody, to every business on Main Street. They spent the entire day making that face-to-face connection, dropping off flyers, talking about the project, and trying to engage. And then there has been significant follow-up, not only from staff, but also from even the council. So thank you for your time and effort on that. And then, you know, one of the questions was, I heard Main Street businesses were heavily impacted by this weekend. What have you found? We have found a mixed bag of responses. I have the blessed fortune of being a part of several little merchant groups, and one in particular was reporting about 70% of the businesses did fine on Saturday, and about 50% of the businesses did not on Sunday. And then we also are reaching out directly to business by business and trying to figure out where they sat as far as their economic impacts. We had some businesses who were expecting to have a really, really rough weekend, and ended up being 65% above their average. We had some businesses that had a little loss, weekend over weekend, but then when they looked back historically, that it was, then when they compared it to last year's back to, the weekend before, back to school, they found that they had the same dip there, too. So it was consistent with that. And especially the, that perspective matches what we saw in the traffic volumes, too. So that makes a little sense. And then as far as, you know, was Main Street busy this weekend? I was out here both days for a long time, and I have a horrible shirt tan to prove it. But what I will say is, rarely was there a parking stall on Main Street available. The first floor was always busy on the parking garage, and the second floor was, at worst, half-full. So, pretty decent outcome. You can kind of gauge how many people are coming out into town. So, and then also, you know, hearing about some of the restaurants, I believe Hangtown Cantina on Sunday had about a 30-minute wait for a table. They were, they were slammed. And, you know, so we did see some highs and some lows, and then we also heard of businesses having a hard time. But now, one thing that to consider from that is, you know, why are we doing this? Well, we want to see what doing this actually does to the community, if it's something that we could make into something sustainable. And what does sustainable mean? Are we considering permanent improvements? Yes. Do we know what those formal improvements are? We do not. We're figuring it out right now. And after this weekend, we have been in listening mode. So some of the feedback that we've received from the public, residents and merchants. So from the public, you know, because we did directly interface with the detoured public, having even each intersection manned, what we found was, it gave us a great opportunity to see how the public was receiving the project. So I'd say about 75% of the folks found themselves detoured, were actually very patient and offered praises, and really appreciate that. About 25% stated or showed disapproval by their colorful responses, or reminding us that we're number one. And on social media, we received an average approval rating of about 78.3%, and that's based off of likes and loves versus the counter emotions or responses to posts. And although that there were certainly a lot of comments, there were often multiple comments by some of the same individuals, and were found to be part of a very vocal and loud group few, rather than from a lot of the business owners, or the customers, or the patrons. So, you know, for example, one feedback that I got actually today was, staff from Ferguson off of Placerville Drive had nothing but praises for the project while they were serving customers. That's what they received. And then we had another business on Main Street that was very upset, and complained of the worst Sunday that they'd had in a long time. So it was a mixed bag. So from the residents, a lot of the feedback we received were praises. However, we did have some tricky situations that we were alerted to, and as I mentioned earlier, specifically at Canal Street and some at Spring Street. You know, I mentioned the residents between B Street and US 50 off of Canal actually have the hardest spot in the whole project. And we did hear from some of those folks. We heard them from in the field, and we heard it from it afterwards. And I do want to assure those folks that we have made some adjustments on this next iteration. And then as far as merchants and restaurants, I kind of covered that we had around 70% or so reporting that they did well on Saturday, and around 50% reporting, you know, better, and then 50% reporting really bad Sundays. So, so we, you know, we kind of have to collect all this data. So all this data, though, what are we going to do with it? It's very anecdotal, right? A lot of it is. So we are, we take it, we kind of, we consider where we could have done better. I will say, you know, we even made adjustments during this weekend. We actually made some adjustments to some of the detour routes. We all significantly underestimated the amount of volume of traffic that comes from Highway 49. So we made some immediate adjustments, like by about 2:00 o'clock, we actually had a different detour route in place. And it worked out better. Then we received some very constructive and helpful feedback comments from our police department while they were out there. And so the very next morning on setup, we implemented those revisions, too. We also recognized that we could do a better job of our messaging. We are working already on not only our social media and outreach messaging, but actually in our signage. We are ordering six very large signs that direct folks to take this exit or this turn to access downtown Main Street businesses and residents, or and restaurants, excuse me. Those signs have already been designed, and they will be fabricated close to the end of the week. But we wanted to wait on it, because we never know if we have to change something again. So we're trying to just be, maintain our listening mode on this. And then that kind of covers the majority of the questions and things that I've seen out there. Oh, one other question I had, I saw pop up a lot, was why was, are PD out there for enforcement versus CHP? So I do want to state that CHP has provided us some support. They were actually roving in the area. I saw them quite heavily this weekend outside of city limits, which was good. But PD through state legislative action is designated as the enforcement agency for, for Highway 50. So, and they did a phenomenal job. So I really appreciated their help. And then I also wanted to extend a huge thank you to, to Eldorado County Transportation Commission, and police and fire, and, you know, Caltrans, and Veer Camp, and also city staff. Just thank you for everybody's help and everybody's patience as we learn and try something. So that's all.
Thank you, Rebecca, for that very thorough update and presentation. I want to give the public a chance to comment on this if they would like to. Ruth, I see you looking at the agenda and saying, where, where are we? We added, under adoption of the agenda, we added a brief presentation on Trip to Green, a 6.3. So that's where we are in it right now. So if anyone would like to make a comment, please step up to the podium. I always appreciate it if you state your name for the record, and please keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Sue Rodman, I'm resident of Placerville. And I had a friend that I talked to about, she had gone for a hike up to Avalanche Lake on Saturday, and found going through Placerville very smooth, and they were happy. And then as they were coming back, they were thinking, okay, should we get off and wind down through Pleasant Valley Road, or should we try Highway 50? They decided to try Highway 50, and they were very pleased. It went very smooth. I went downtown just to see what was going on about noon on Sunday, and like you said, there was not a single parking place along, along all of Main Street. So, and I saw people walking around, so that told me that people were there, and they were shopping, and they were eating in the restaurants. The restaurants, like, you can see people right there. They all looked like they had customers. So I think it went very well. I think it was a success.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Ruth Michelson, Merchant, Main Street. I didn't actually come to speak about this, and I'm sorry, Rebecca, I missed your presentation for the most part. But I do want to speak as a merchant, because I did work the whole weekend at our gallery, and I did speak to almost every single person who came in and asked them how they found the situation. And the big problem was those who were coming from Apple Hill. Only the tenacious figured it out. The others, well, obviously, I don't know, because they didn't figure it out. But the ones who did come into my shop, who'd come from Apple Hill, said that they're, they did not see signage. It could have been there, but it wasn't adequate to take the exit, the mosquito exit. And so they passed by, they could see that Main Street was open, but they couldn't figure how to get there. And so they actually dangerously pulled over, spoke to the manned, the people at the various, you know, barricades, and said, I want to get there. How do I do that? I don't think we want people pulling over on Highway 50, asking how to get downtown. So they did do the whole Placerville Drive, go around, turn around thing. So anyway, and maybe Rebecca already addressed this with all the signs coming in, but something better has to, needs to happen to help people get downtown. And as far as what business was like, yeah. No, seeing that every parking spot is taken is not an indicator, because that's just the minimum. I mean, people park all over, and just because street parking is taken doesn't mean it's good business. If there were more merchants here, you would hear that the business was greatly impacted over the weekend. I, I have faith that with better signage, things will improve. But it was business, maybe not restaurants, but retail was greatly impacted by the Trip to Green in a negative way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth.
Council members, Mayor Taylor, Woodrow Delorean, Eldorado County Transportation Commission, I want to thank the council for your leadership on this, very innovative, out-of-the-box project, to try to come up with a solution to the, to the traffic in Placerville that we all experienced, we have for many, many decades. I want to thank, thank Rebecca and acknowledge the extensive amount of work that she has done in preparation and planning for this, and developing the detours. I am not a traffic engineer. We rely on people with far bigger brains than, than mine to do that, and Rebecca did that very, very effectively. She was here early Saturday, all day Saturday, all day Sunday, helping with the team and running the show. And I really appreciate her leadership on this effort. One thing that she didn't mention is, one of the questions that I have gotten numerous times is, why are we, why are we catering to the pass-through traffic? And I just want to make it clear that that is not at all the intent of this Trip to Green. Over the past few years, especially during the pandemic, we have seen a huge influx in traffic, trying to get around the congestion that is caused by interregional tourism travel. Everybody carries, carries one of these and, and follows them to try to get around congestion, which was backing up onto local residential neighborhood streets, which Google does not, does not acknowledge nor care, that those, those streets are not built for that capacity of traffic, which creates not only an inconvenience for local residents, but also a safety issue during fire season and all the things that were, were very real last year. Another thing that Rebecca didn't mention is that we did have, also had a detour for pedestrian and bicycle traffic. So we did take that into consideration. We do have a wonderful pedestrian overcrossing, and we routed folks to that, to that pedestrian overcrossing, which, if you're coming from the north, drops folks right into, to Main Street in Placerville. But lastly, I want to thank and acknowledge the grace, patience, and understanding of the local residents, who, you know, put up with, put up with this, this, this proof-of-concept, this pilot project over this past weekend, following the detours that we provided, and likely using detours that they probably already had in their minds over years of living in Placerville, knowing that, that weekend traffic across 50 can be a challenge if you're trying to get to Home Depot, or wherever, wherever that might be. We all likely have our own local, local road detours in our minds already. But I do want to acknowledge the, the local residents, the local merchants. We understand that it's a challenge. You know, this, this success of these next couple of weekends for Trip to Green will only be as good as the feedback we get now. So we've done the planning, we've done the preparation. We need to take what we learned from this past weekend and continue listening to the merchants and the residents, and improve upon that for the next couple of weekends. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Woody.
All right, I see no one else stepping up to the mic, so I'm going to close public comment and circle back to the council for any questions or comments that you may have.
I'll make just a couple of comments, and I, unfortunately, I missed this first one. I was, I was out of town, so I didn't get a chance to, to see how it went. But I, I know I've done my own reconnaissance, you know, during a high point, where, you know, it took me 26 minutes to drive from the tractor store to get to Spring Street, to go over and back to my house. So, I mean, it's, it's a real thing, and I'm, thank you, Woody, for bringing it up as well, because the genesis of all this was when we had hours of conversations around, you know, do we make Myrtle Street or what? I mean, we've had tons of conversations about how all of our local streets have been impacted by the, by the amount of traffic and people, you know, using Waze and Google Maps to try to get around some of that traffic. And, and so I, this is going to be a work in progress. And, and I think, you know, the, the main thing here, too, is, yes, we want to make sure we, we protect our Main Street business, all of our businesses. Because on Sundays, I can tell you, I don't want to go drive to the east side of town, because I don't want to be struck in a half an hour amount of traffic to get back to my house. So I don't go. And I'm sure I'm not the only one. And that, that impacts businesses as well. And Placerville can't be known and be predicated upon, the way we attract businesses is by trapping people in traffic. It's really not a good business plan. So we have to come up with, you know, solutions to some of these things that have been going on for decades. So I, again, I appreciate all the work. Rebecca, thank you for being out there for, from dusk till dawn, to making sure that this happened. dusk till dawn to making sure that this happened. And acknowledging that there were issues and that we're going to work on those. And again, this is a pilot project and we'll have to see, you know, where all this goes. So again, thank you to everybody.
I was here this weekend and drove around. Rebecca, I sent you some comments. You know, overall, everybody I talked to had an easy enough time getting around. But of course, if you live in Placerville, like Michael said, when it gridlocks, we don't leave our house for the weekend. And there's certain weekends, I'm really actually looking forward to Labor Day weekend to see how that goes. Because those are weekends that we don't leave our house. You go shopping for everything you need for the weekend so that you can stay there. Highway 50, one of the things that I had, I came back from Missouri Flat traveling into town about 1:30 on Saturday, and everybody slammed on the brakes to 25 miles an hour on the freeway. And I thought, wow, that's kind of intense. So I, I didn't know if we could maybe post another 40 sign or something there because it almost seemed like it might be dangerous if everybody does that when it's in high traffic. But I don't know, that was my one observation. And, you know, I originally was wondering if we really needed all those people on all those streets. But then I saw people sitting, trying to turn left. And I was like, I guess we do need those people because, you know, there were some signage issues and it sounds like we're going to get those all worked out. And so I was actually glad we kind of had this on a lighter weekend to kind of work out some of those quirks before the Labor Day weekend. So I'll be looking forward to that. Thank you.
I too want to add my thanks. Rebecca, I had one question about, are we, after you get this program going, are you going to, are you going to require all the personnel to be stationed at each section like you did this time? Is it, is it going to, or will, after you get it ironed out, is it going to kind of lessen that need for?
All three weekends, we will have each leg of every intersection manned. It's part of the contract.
So, in, in, in years, in years to come?
Oh, oh, we don't have anything planned beyond these three weekends.
When this works.
Possibly. We have a lot to cover on that in the future. Yeah. We don't know yet.
And I, I also wanted to mention another thing. You were talking about the low volume, the lower, I had reason to go out on Missouri Flat Road. It was dead. So it wasn't, I don't know what was going on that weekend. My daughter was here and we were commenting that, I don't know, I said, geez, Saturday? And we, we did Saturday and Sunday. It was not Missouri Flat Road, the usual traffic. So something was amiss. I don't know what. And I know it wasn't the highway situation that was causing people to not go on Missouri Flat Road. So.
Yeah, one, one comment I heard was gas prices.
What?
Gas prices are keeping.
Well, yeah, maybe that too. I don't know. So, but anyway, I, you know, and I'm just going to say, it's never going to be 100%. You can't please everybody. And there's going to be comments and there's going to be folks that don't like it. And it's just, it's, it's nature, it's natural thing that's going to happen. But I think overall, it's going to be an answer to a problem that we have had for many, many years. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Perfect execution of this pilot project may or may not mean success for the project. It, we have a lot of data to accumulate and analyze. And smarter people than myself and Woody will look at this data and, and take some serious consideration into what it tells us. There's a lot of anecdotal information out there. I heard from some businesses that they were up X percent and some that were horribly down X percent. Some people blamed the roads, some people, you know, weather. It could have been that person's neighbor that had a problem and the butterfly effect. You just don't know all of the anecdotal reasons why businesses are successful or not successful at the given times. And I, and I've been doing business on Main Street for 40 plus years. And, and we, we can never, the downtown merchants can never decide on what it means to be successful downtown or what it means to be not successful downtown when it comes to events and projects and, and things that interrupt our business, that change the, the traffic patterns and people's patterns. And, and so all these, there's a lot of things that they're going into effect here. On a holiday weekend, on an all holiday weekend, we got school that would just, the people, schools just starting up now. And, and so there's, it's interesting. Some people's business, they compare to last year, the year before, the year before, and some were up and some were down. On this particular weekend and those previous years, there's so much anecdotal evidence. We need really good data to make some decisions with this. And, and that's what this is going to do. I don't see this as, you know, let me start over. We're doing this for public safety. And we want to know whether we can provide a safer environment during fire season, during high traffic, high impact to our community. And provide, it's one of the impetuses of this. Because we had so many people sitting, if you looked at the map, it was all red. The whole town was red. It was a red flag day. It was a, it was, and there was a power PSPS at the same time. And, and it was completely gridlocked on a red flag day. And so that, that was one of those moments in time where I think all of us that were looking at this potential to say, we, we need to do something. And we're doing it. It may or may not work. It may not be the perfect solution. But, but if we did nothing, that would be a problem too. And this is literally the first time we've done something to, to mitigate the impact on our community. It's not going to be perfect. It's not going to be great the first time. It may not even be great the second time. But it'll give us data and information to, to evaluate whether we want to do this more. And that's what I'm looking forward to. I don't look, look forward to this, this rupture in our community. It's challenging. But so is, so is having fires and so is having traffic in all our side roads. So it's, it's not perfect. And I, and I know that it's not, that not everybody finds this palatable, palatable. And the more that we hear from people, the more information that we have, the more comments we have from the community through all channels, whether it's emails or Facebook or, or what have you, is going to help the people that are smarter than Woody and I, make really important decisions for our community and how we move forward and give information to this council and help us make a decision before. So, all of it's important.
Thank you Dennis. That was really well said. I don't have much to add that hasn't already been said. But I do just want to extend my, my thanks to City Engineer Rebecca Neves and Woody with EDCTC and our PD and fire and Caltrans. And, and city staff generally for all the hard work that went into this. And I do want to thank the community for their patience as we try to find solutions to this really challenging problem that's, that's been challenging for this community for many years. So, thank you again Rebecca for that presentation. We will move on to item seven, the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of all resolutions will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise. I'll open the consent calendar, item seven, up to the public if anyone would like to comment on any items under the consent calendar. All right, seeing no one jumping up, I'm going to close public comment on that and bring it back to the council.
I'll move for approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Can we get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Taylor.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Councilmember No.
Aye. Thank you Erin. And that brings us to item eight on the agenda. This is public comment for non-agendized items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. If you would like staff or council members to respond back to your questions or comments, please leave your contact information. There's a form, is there a form tonight on the back table? Okay. There's going to be a form on the back table if you would like anyone to follow up with you. Please, I appreciate it if you state your name voluntarily. And please keep your comments to three minutes or under. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dawn Wolfson. I wasn't going to speak, but I just want to very much thank Mayor Taylor for addressing the misinformation that went out in that flyer and the effort to derail something that people have been working very hard on for a lot of years. Much appreciated. I hope that people who listen to that heard it and maybe will even speak up at next week's Board of Supervisors meeting in favor of moving forward. It's way past time. Thank you.
Thank you Dawn.
Well, I'm glad that Dawn spoke because I missed what you had to say. And actually, that's what I was going to speak about. I will look at the YouTube archived to see what you had to say. But, so I hope I'm not too redundant to what Mayor Taylor said. But I was really disturbed by that flyer that was distributed on car windshields and later was officially distributed at the El Dorado Hills, Cameron Park, Chamber of Commerce, and also distributed at some Republican meetings. And I think you're all familiar with that flyer, that full color yellow and red and black flyer that sort of lambasted this effort for the housing, for the homeless, the navigation center and the shelter for Perks Court. And I just wanted to go on the record that such slanderous and incorrect information is shameful. It's just shameful. I'm, I'm not addressing you, I'm addressing the authors of that flyer to derail a plan, as Dawn said, that's just been in the making for so long. And finally, finally, and we're one of four out of 58 counties that does not have an emergency shelter. Yes, there are some things in Tahoe, but they are not emergency shelters. And to be so close and to have some of these last minute efforts made to derail it. And so anyway, I'll take just a minute. Does anyone, do I have a couple minutes, a minute? I'm going to read what I had written in response to that flyer. It says, "This flyer is disturbing as it contains outright lies and misconception, it appears to be written to rile up the unsuspecting public. It is irresponsible to distribute this flyer. Let's set the record straight and go over the flyer point by point." And this isn't very long. "Housing provided with no accountability." That is totally false. That is not what this plan of Perks Court is. There is accountability. "Circumvent land use and general plan." I'm not seeing that. I'd like someone to please explain how it is circumventing the general plan. "Drug use allowed." Absolutely false. "Persons and their belongings are going to be searched before entering." This is just scare tactics. "Free needles, et cetera." This is not part of this proposed shelter and navigation program. That's referencing some other program, harm reduction. It does not mix apples and oranges. That's just something else. And if they have a problem with harm reduction, well then go deal with that. "Civil disrespect." These are all the claims that are on this flyer for this program, the, the Perks Court program. No, this plan provides stability and requires conformity to rules. Basically, what this is all about is promoting the sheriff's hostess plan. And that leaves the county open to lawsuit because it doesn't meet the Boise versus Martin requirements, which is, you know, you're all familiar with that one. And why law enforcement does not have a place to remove people from public lands because we don't have shelter beds. And so if it doesn't meet those requirements, it also doesn't qualify for funding. So it's just dead in the water. And why these people keep bringing it up, I'm not sure. So the last bit here is, oh, they have in big letters, homeless camps could be coming to a neighborhood near you. What? For goodness sake, this plan calls for the opposite. There are already homeless camps throughout the county. Law enforcement is currently powerless to remove the homeless from public lands because due to this Martin versus Boise, there is no emergency shelter beds to offer. Providing the emergency shelter gives law enforcement the tools to clean up the camps. Why is this not understood and being grossly misrepresented by the imposing group? All the bullet points provided in this flyer for the sheriff's plan are also consistent for the current proposed plan, meaning what they're selling for their plan also meets this Perks Court plan. So can you please wrap up your comments? Okay, thank you. Well, anyway, I can really end it there. Thank you. I think you get my point. Thank you for your comments.
I'm Kelly Rogers. I own the skate shop here at 103 Main. I've been here my whole life. I used to run these streets as a kid. So I'm getting at that, I'm not a new guy. So I did read that flyer. My mom forwarded that to me. And it's really just atrocious because just as a business owner on Main Street, like I deal with the homeless, it's relentless in my parking lot. Okay? It's relentless. It's really just like a myriad of, what am I going to find today? Am I going to find human waste, some trash, shopping carts? The fourth or fifth one I found this week is in my parking lot that I'm going to haul it back up to Safemark. You know? I have been here my whole life and I do love this town. But I also get out of this town so I get some perspective. And there's other communities really working together. I don't know what they're doing, but their homeless population seems to be somewhere else than in the downtown. Right? And I'm on the other, I'm on the lower end of Main Street. So I feel like the businesses that are not between Sacramento Street and Cedar Ravine take the brunt of this stuff. Right? And I'm over it. Like, there's days I want to pack it up and leave. You know, but then there's other days I'm going to hang in there and fight because this is my home. You know, I do see that there's change coming. And I really, I'm going on public right now because, or public con, or record right now, saying that the people out there that are against this navigation center need to just sit down and get out of the way. Because the opposite of progression is regression. And I've been through everything here in this town in my life. And I'm kind of tired of people that aren't ready to progress and move us into the future. Because none of this is going to matter. The noose, the, everything everyone's been arguing over the last couple of years is never going to, is not going to matter. Because the creek right now, behind my shop in particularly, is full of garbage. It's polluted. I have video of this. I do this all the time. You know, one suggestion I would love to make is, I don't know if there's something in the works to get that creek cleaned out. I know I talked to some of the police officers the other day that were there. They were telling me they would love that because they can't see in there. Right? I would say that, to tell the chief here, that one of his officers did call me and gave me a letter of no trespassing. But that's really only going to do so much. Right? This is a huge community issue. And we need to move forward to do something. And the people that are against this navigation center, like I said, sit down and get out of the way, man, because you're blowing it. Your community is suffering as it is. The people are already doing drugs everywhere. They're homeless for a myriad of reasons. I mean, I don't have the answers for that stuff. But I do know that what's happening in our community is just not sustainable at all. And it's up to everyone, not just you guys. You know, I do my part. I clean up the creek. I do everything I can, everything I can, and run a small business for 10 years, which I think is a pretty good thing that I've done. I'm pretty proud of that. But I'm frustrated, I'm angry, and, but I'm also willing to work with people to make things better. So I'm not here really to complain at you guys, but I guess I kind of did. But I just wanted to be known, like I've been here, I'm, I'm over this. So whoever's listening out there, like if you're not for this navigation center and working as a community to get this shit done, then get out of the way. That's all I got to say.
Thank you Kelly.
Barbara Rogers. I'm sure most of you know, Kelly's my son. He's probably not going to like that I got up here. However, I did send the video to Cleve. I do believe I sent it to Cara. I know I sent it to Wendy Dennis and asked her to show it to you. My complaint is the disgusting creek. I've been in this community since 1977. As you know, started my career with the fire department in 1978. We used to have a group of people called the Friends of Hating Town Creek. They used to come in and they used to clean the, help clean the creek out. And also with the help of Growlersburg, they would clean away the vegetation and such. Now, my son paid someone to come and do that below his shop. He goes down in that filthy creek and he pulls that crap out. I've told him, don't go down there. There's needles down there. They're crapping in the creek. They're peeing in the creek. They're whatever else. The garbage down there is disgusting. It's a pollution. It's a hazard. God only knows what's growing down there. So I'm asking the city to please find a way to get the creek cleaned up. Or let's get some volunteers together. I know right now, trying to get Growlersburg is just a dream. You're not going to get them this time of year. I, I know I've talked to Patty numerous times. Fish and games involved with, you can only do it certain times of the year, which to me is so comical. I don't know what they're worried about. They ought to see the pollution in the creek. You know? So I, I don't like what I'm seeing here. You know, I worked in this city from 1978 till we consolidated into county fire in 1991. I don't know what's happened to this community with the people and the camaraderie we all used to share. And everybody knew everybody and everybody helped everybody. And Cara. And Kara, thank you for mentioning that flyer. I find it disgusting. They say it's not political, but it comes from the El Dorado County Republican Party, that letter. This, they've made it a partisan issue. It's a human issue about our homeless. Like my son, I don't have the answers, but you have people that do support what you're trying to do and I support what the Board of Supervisors are trying to do also, instead of people obstructing with their so-called FPCC complaints. Anyway, I wish you all luck. You know that.
Good evening, council members. My name's Giovanni Adolini. I've been a carpenter since 1997 and a very active voter since 1992. I recently moved to Placerville in 2019. I live on Forni Road. I'm encouraged by the idea of bringing more development to the Placerville area at a time when there are more homeless than ever in our community. However, I find it disheartening that there's a lack of projects in our community willing to pay area standard wages with healthcare coverage. It's a slap in the face to our over 100 skilled blue collar workers and apprentices here in Placerville that are forced to drive hours away to the Bay Area to find work that pays a livable wage and health benefits. We are a hardworking patriotic city and we should be setting the example and the standard of doing what is right for blue collar families. I would kindly ask that the council members please consider adopting a requirement that any proposed developments pay area standard carpenter wages, healthcare coverage, and a commitment to hire local carpenters and tradesmen, including apprentices. I have personally benefited from a state-approved apprenticeship program and my quality of life is better because of it. I was able to buy a home here in Placerville and my wife is able to stay home and raise our daughter instead of paying a stranger to do so. Apprenticeship programs give those without the opportunity to attend college the ability to acquire skills that lead to good-paying jobs and a shot at the American dream. These developers are never going to do the right thing and pay area standard wages on their own. With your leadership, we can send a message to all developers that Placerville and its community will not stand for the exploitation of carpenters, skilled tradesmen, and apprentices so they can increase their profits. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak.
All right, I'm seeing no one else stepping up to the podium. All right, if you'd like to make a comment, step on up, please.
Peg Vanderkar, Placerville. I'm sorry to be late and I didn't quite know where you were on this, but I just learned about it. I wanted to speak to, which might not be the topic, I hope it is, but the Center for Homeless that we hope to have as a first step and as not the solution to all problems for sure, but a place to start. And my concern over the letter that I've seen and pictures I've seen being distributed that have inaccuracies that are severe, mixed with some truths and that makes it more difficult. And so I'm just really deeply saddened by that step because some of the people involved I highly respect. Anyway, just wanted to be in support of the homeless center moving forward and knowing that it's not the only thing that we need. Thank you.
Good evening. Jonathan Gainesville. It says in Isaiah, Chapter 8, verse 20, it says, "Woe." It says, "Woe unto those that call good evil." I'm speaking to the Republican Party in the county. I'm ashamed to be a Republican, to have voted for Republican. I am ashamed of the Republican Party in this county. Woe, 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 the Bible says, "Woe unto you that call good evil." Woe to you, God says. God is saying to you, "Woe, watch your step." Woe to you that call good evil and call darkness light. Woe to you casting lies into the pool of our county, almost 200,000 people. Disgraceful, disgraceful. You are disgraceful to fight the compassion that the city and the county have worked for and have pledged national and state funds. It's not local funds. That's a lie. You're lying. You're liars. Woe to you. Woe to you sheriff if you stand behind this calumny. Woe to you John if you let these people say they're on your team. Woe to those who call good, call good evil and call evil good. It's a lie. It's a lie. Drugs will not be allowed. There's not five homeless centers being launched as that article says. Woe to you. Woe to you Republican Party. You're not Republicans. You're not people of the republic. You're not people for the people of the republic. You're not Democrats for the people, for the people ruling. The majority of the county has said enough of this, not in my backyard, not in my county, not in my neighborhood. So I sat next to one of the young people in the county this afternoon at lunch. They had to peel him off the street Saturday afternoon because he overdosed on fentanyl from the Broadway jungle. Woe to you Republicans that stand in the way of this and woe to you that call yourself a pastor. You're trampling on the homeless. You're trampling on the people that Jesus has a heart for. Yes, they had to use eight different portions of Norcom to bring them back from the dead. Woe to you Republicans. We need a compassion audit. You call yourselves Americans. Give us your humble, your poor, the wretched refuse of your teeming shores. Woe to you, the Bible says, that call good evil and evil good. This is a good plan. The Hostage Plan was called a hostage plan by the homeless up on Upper Broadway. Keep up the good work, City of Placerville and County of El Dorado. Let's pass this and God bless you.
Thank you, Jonathan. All right, I see no one else stepping up to public comment, which brings us to 8.2 written communications. Were there any written communications?
We did receive one item of written communication regarding our item 10.2. You received a copy of that. There's also copies in the back on the table for the public.
Thank you. Couple, couple of things came up. Chief, chief is out. Okay. I was just going to ask if he had any updates on the creek, but...
He's actually talking to the...
Okay. I think they're working it out then, I imagine. Okay. I want to thank everyone that came tonight to speak during public comment. Your feedback and communication with the city is really appreciated. We will move on to item 10, ordinances. 10.1, this is to introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance amending Title VII of the Placerville Municipal Code, Health and Sanitation, adding Chapter 17, Private Sewer Lateral Ordinance to the city code. And Mr. Rivas, you have...
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Before I get started with my staff presentation, staff had a in-depth conversation with our city attorney regarding some of the provisions in the ordinance and there is a little serious legal question regarding the city's ability to compel a property owner to enter into a maintenance agreement, private sewer lateral maintenance agreement. And so if it's a pleasure of the council, staff would like to give a staff report, we would request that you allow for public comment. I think that'd be good. There are probably people here that want to speak on this item and we can take those comments back and that this item be continued, that you continue the first reading to your next meeting in two weeks.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay, so I'd like to start just by giving a little background on this ordinance and one of the main questions that people ask is why a private sewer lateral ordinance? Much of the city was developed over the last half century or more, meaning that many of the existing private sewer services and private sewer laterals are utilizing inferior pipe materials or may have other structural defects that contribute to the release of sewage, which we call sanitary sewer overflows or SSOs, into the environment, which can cause a threat to public health and to the environment. Another problem is the contribution of INI, which is inflow and infiltration of groundwater and stormwater into the city's collection system. And many of these private sewer systems do contribute to that problem. So the goal here is to keep our city clean, reduce or eliminate health threats, and to maintain the city's overall sewer system in compliance with the city's permit from the Regional Water Board. The city also settled a previous lawsuit with the California River Watch back in 2016 and the city agreed to address its overall sewer collection system to reduce or to eliminate sewer spills, which may contribute its way in the surface waters, and this ordinance would also assist in that effort. Anytime there is an unintended release of sanitary sewage overflow into the environment, the event must be quantified and reported to the California Regional Water Quality Control Board. Over the past few years, city requests and repairs related to private sewer laterals and private, what we would call common laterals, where more than one house is served by that common private lateral, have accounted, have almost doubled the repairs strictly tied to the public water sewer collection system, which strains the workload of our Public Works Division staff. So what is the city currently doing? The city has been actively pursuing the use of code enforcement under current Title VII, Chapter VII sewer regulations of the city code to address damaged and failing private sewer systems when the repair or replacement of a private system becomes known to the city. Section 7-4-19 of the city code specifies the responsibilities of the private property owner. In October of 2015, the city developed a standardized form letter that identifies the location, condition of the sewer system, and the citation of city code and enforcement actions. This procedure has been effective in pursuing private sewer lateral collection systems issues on a more reactive basis. And I emphasize the term reactive because the city becomes involved after an unfortunate event and then becomes an emergency situation. When the city finds that a number of houses, units are served by a common lateral, and I use the term here, like a collector lateral, the city finds the property owners of interest having varying degrees of private ownership and responsibility. And that's been probably one of the more problematic situations that we have. So say, for example, you have a private collection lateral, 10 homes are served by that private lateral. Usually the people uphill is out of sight, out of mind, so they don't understand, they don't see the problem and they don't want to pay or facilitate or assist in the financial burden of replacing that line. And so it's the person down towards the bottom where the sewage is coming up into their basement or in their bathroom or something of that nature. And then it's a fight and the city finds itself attempting to mediate that kind of situation because when you're on a private sewer lateral, all property owners that share that private lateral would share equally. So in my example of 10 homes, each home really would share 10% of the cost of replacement of that private sewer lateral instead of, you know, fighting and then the city has to step in and sometimes people don't have enough money and the city would upfront the money and then have to lean the properties that weren't able to participate. So this private sewer lateral ordinance would be more proactive and provide a greater level of protection to the city sewer system, the environment, and public health and safety. So rather than wait until a sewer spill or private system failure, the proposed ordinance seeks to cause specified triggers initiating the testing and inspection of the private systems to determine their integrity, thus reducing future private common sewer lateral failures. This private ordinance, private sewer lateral ordinance establishes regulations and enforcement causing inspections, testing, repair, replacement, and ongoing maintenance of the private sewer laterals, resulting in the issuance of what we call a certification of lateral compliance or COLC. Who does the ordinance apply to? This ordinance would apply to all private sewer laterals and private common sewer lateral connections that would ultimately connect to the city's public sewer collection system located either within the city of Placerville or located within the incorporated areas of El Dorado County, which are also served by the city's municipal sewer system. So another question is, what does the ordinance require? The ordinance requires a certification of lateral compliance, which initiates the repairs and replacements necessary to bring a private sewer lateral into compliance with the California Plumbing Code. And what are these triggers? I'll just quickly outline them. Before completing a title transfer of a parcel containing any structure with a sewer service connection, shall obtain a COLC unless the property already has one, or the private sewer lateral, private sewer system is less than 10 years old, or a time extension has been granted by the city. Two, whenever a property containing one or more structures is subdivided, serving the property shall require testing. Three, whenever the property is remodeled and that remodeling includes the addition of two or more plumbing fixtures. Four, whenever the property owner submits an application for the construction or building permit for the remodel of a structure and the cost which equals or exceeds 25% of the market value of the structure. Five, upon the repair or replacement of a portion of the private sewer lateral and it's found that the remaining is in disrepair. Six, following a sanitary sewer overflow complaint or complaint and the city determines that the cleaning, testing, repair, replacement, or of the system is required. And then lastly, where the private sewer lateral was installed without permit and then does not have a certificate of lateral compliance. So typical requirements do include all private sewer laterals or sewer cleanouts, which contain leaks or breaks, uncapped or improperly capped sewer cleanouts, sump pumps, downspouts or yard drains which discharge into the city's sanitary sewer system, and all other sources of accidental, negligent, or intended introduction of stormwater runoff or similar waters into our sewer system are declared to be a public nuisance subject to abatement in accordance with the city code. And if the city abates a sewer-related public nuisance, the cost of such abatement shall be assessed against the property owner and may result in a lien against the property. So some of the modifications, I'd like to go over just real quickly some of the modifications to the ordinance that is before you. This ordinance first came before you, I think, several years ago and since then, we've done a lot of consulting and we've made some adjustments. All those adjustments and changes are made by underline and strikeout, so you can see the changes that were made to the code since it was previously before you. One of the, one of the changes we made is identifying, better identifying staff responsibilities. So you may see where maybe we had put the responsibility on the city manager that may have changed to city engineer, where you may have seen director, meaning Director of Development Services, we may have put that responsibility, say, on our building official, which does have authority over the private plumbing. We've also added, and this is probably most important for us to pay attention to, and that's, we've added Section 7-17-8. And that added requirements for owners served by a private common sewer lateral to enter in a private sewer maintenance agreement. So staff reviewed and added this section and we've discussed this section with our city attorney and she is recommending that we do continue action on the first reading to allow staff to continue to work with the city attorney regarding our legal ability to compel the property owner to enter into the maintenance agreement absent a building permit, or can an inspection for the issuance of a certification of lateral compliance allow for the city to require the maintenance agreement? And the purpose of the maintenance agreement is to provide for notice to property owners that share in the common sewer lateral and the agreement would be recorded... that share in the common sewer lateral, and the agreement would be recorded and it would show in, in a property title report. So many times, we've seen various situations where there's a lot of property title transfers taking place now, and the property owners have no idea they're on a private lateral, and they have no idea of the cost that may be incurred. And I think it's important for that to be known upfront, maybe even the seller may not know, and they can't disclose it to the buyer. And so knowing that may adjust then the value of that property, something for, for, you know, a buyer to consider when purchasing said property. So I think that's extremely important. And then all the property owners being served by that property lateral know that they share in, in the responsibility and the cost, regardless of where they are on the hill and whether or not they're directly being impacted or not by that failing sewer line. So just some other changes that we would include when we come back, under the definition of property owner on page six, it's just a minor thing, we'll change that, the word "that" to "who" in the first sentence. Under the Section 7-17-7, subsection A, 3B, we would change director to building official. And then under subsection B, we would change director in the first sentence only to building official. So with that, let's see if there's anything else I'm missing. Staff did receive comments via email from Deborah Miller, and she was representing the real estate industry, and I think it'd be a good idea to hear any additional comments for her, since this is an additional requirement then to the real estate industry, because this will add yet another disclosure. Say, for example, when there's always a disclosure regarding any defects of the property, the condition of the roof, you know, pest control, termites, dry rot, all those kinds of things. And now we'll have this additional one regarding the condition of any private sewer lateral. We've received a lot of phone inquiries from the general public, and we've attempted to address those. And one last comment I want to add, it was, it was very interesting, I've never received a comment like this one. We received a telephone call from Mr. Mike Drobish, and he asked the question if the rainwater that enters the drain vents, see, you say, on the roof of all the buildings, is a violation. So I basically told him, no, that's part of the, the, the structures or the dwelling's drain system that then ultimately makes it into the sewer line. But that was an interesting question, because I have no idea what the volume of that water is. So maybe it's something, maybe staff may take a look at and see if we can calculate that, but, but, you know, leave that maybe to our city engineer.
Rebecca's looking at you like, "I don't think so."
Whether that's a significant amount of water that would, that would contribute to our INI. I could just see all the structures in town having a little cap or a little, you know, kind of a hood like you see on fireplaces to prevent rainwater from actually going into the pipe and actually go then onto the roof and onto the ground instead. So, so with that, that concludes staff's report, and happy to answer any questions you have at this time, and be happy to hear any questions from the public that happen to be here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Pierre. Questions from the council?
I do. And I'm actually kind of glad that we may have some more time here, because, I mean, just for the public to know too, is, is, we don't get these a whole lot sooner than the public does, so this was a lot to take in on this issue. And I, for one, at least for myself, could use the extra time to really, I think, dig a little bit deeper into this, because this was, you know, I looked at it and I read it, and I was like, okay, and then I read it again, and then I was like, this is big. And, and this could be, you know, you know, pricey for a lot of people, so, you know, I really want to make sure whatever we do, we're making the right decisions, and we're doing it in a way that's going to have, it's going to accomplish what we want, but hopefully in a way that's not going to be so detrimental to, to private owners. A couple of questions is, a couple, and this may be a legal one as well, but, first question is, do we know, do we have a, an estimate, I mean, I saw some numbers in here, but because the private lateral serve X amount of homes, it could be four, 10, whatever, do we know how many residences approximately may be affected by, by this?
You know, staff was hoping to have that number for you, because we, we were aware that was a question that may come up. So what I can tell you is we've identified approximately 84 common private sewer laterals that serve more than one parcel. And out of those, I believe it's approximately 35 that currently are under a private sewer lateral maintenance agreement. And so we would want to target, if we're looking at targeting, then we would want to target then those owners that we know are on, that are served by a private common sewer lateral that, that may or may not know they're on such a sewer.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know. If I'm on one, I'm, I don't know. I have no idea. I, I can see my house having one, because it's really old. So, okay, so that, that's fair. In terms of the, you know, compelling on, on a sale in terms of getting the work done, because you do have, you know, it's not just one person, like under the scenario you said, if you're the, the person on top or wherever, you can't afford it, what have you, so you have a system that's not fixed, but you're selling your house, you had a relative pass away, the house is in, you know, goes into probate, whatever. How do you, I mean, if you don't, if it's a whole system, not just your own part, I mean, do you, let's just say it's 10%, and that's your, your portion, if there's 10 people. If you satisfy your 10% amount, I mean, if you don't, I mean, you're incurring the cost for all 10 houses to get a sense of how much it's going to cost. So I, I mean, to me, there's a lot of issues of how, the practicality of how that even works in terms of ownership transfers.
Yes, that's a very good question. So I think the way, the way I would look at this is, we are, as I said earlier in my staff report, we're more reactive, and so nothing really changes. It's still an obligation of those 10, in our example, those 10 property owners do have the responsibility to fix that line. And so with this, we're hoping to be a little bit more proactive, and so every, every 10 years or upon property transfer, that will be a trigger to have that inspection. An inspection may prove that the line is perfectly fine, and then they get their certificate. Say if those 10 people had already replaced their, their pipeline, that, with a, with a compliant pipe that meets current specifications, that line may be good for 30 years or more. And so they'll get their certification, and they're fine. But I think it's a, it is a wise disclosure whenever the property sells, so that the unsuspecting property owner then is made aware of that additional responsibility that they have on maintaining that shared line and also in concert with the other property owners. And so, you know, earlier, council members, Sarah Goza, you were saying about the cost. I think the cost is fairly minimal, and so there may be an extreme minor cost to, you know, the transfer of real estate, it's one more or two more sheets of paper in the, you know, for those of us who have more recently bought paper, it just seems to get thicker and thicker as far as all the disclosures, so. But I think this is a very important disclosure, to cite the condition of the roof of your house. In fact, it's more important, because it's a, it's a hidden cost, it's underground. And so I think that that maintenance agreement that'll eventually be recorded, it's going to come out in any title report, and so it's, it's clear that it exists. Persons can come into the city, and they can look at our records, see when it was last replaced. And then again, if they have to do a, I guess where the cost is, if that pipeline is bad, let's just say, for example, it's an Ornsberg pipe, doesn't have a bottom, that pipe has to be replaced. And so it was basically a hidden time bomb that may have come out in the future, where now I think it'll be disclosed hopefully earlier, and then everybody can share in the, in the replacement. And then I understand from previous, a previous situation where we did have a situation where not everybody could afford to pay, we took it out of our sewer fund, and then the city paid for that share of that particular property that couldn't afford to, and it was just a lien on the property. So eventually, if that property ever does sell, then the city would recoup its investment into fixing that problem.
Does that lien incur interest?
I would leave that to Mr. Warren to answer that question. I don't know.
That is correct. The example Mr. Reva was talking about, there was a note included with the lien, and it did accrue interest, simple interest.
Yeah, I just, I mean, depending on how big the fix is, I mean, it could be a significant number potentially, you know, let's say it took 20 years before the house sold, you're compounding interest for, for 20 years on that, so.
So would we end up, I'm, I'm assuming the answer is yes, but I want to ask staff and just confirm it. So we could potentially end up in a situation where we have liens on homes that are worth more than what the property is worth? Which is not a good situation, and we have a lot of that already going on in the city.
Yeah, and the, the particular case that Mr. Reva spoke about, the property owner ended, ended up paying it within three years, so it wasn't a problem.
But hypothetically, if we put it, say, someone needed a $50,000 fix, and they couldn't afford it, so the city provided it, put a lien on the house that accrued interest for 20 years, would that lien be worth more than the house?
I doubt it.
Would it, would it make it?
Values today, I doubt it.
Yeah, Mayor, if, if, if staff could, could answer that. You did receive an email comment from Deborah Miller, and she had an attachment to her comment, and that attachment was very telling. So she provided the, the median cost of, of housing, and this is within the 95667 area code, so it's, it's larger than just the city limits. But in 19, in 2019, the average selling price was 558,000. And then in 2020, it went up to 580,000. And then in 2021, it was 720,000. And then in 2022, mid-year average house, house selling price was $777,000. So we looked at that, and so we would think, I don't know if you're ever going to see the cost of, of a private sewer lateral costing anywhere near this, and so, you know, it's nowhere near the, the value of that house. And it also, there was a section in the code where we require, if there's a substantial amount of, of, a owner does to fixing up their house, we originally had a 50% of, of fair market value, we, we decreased that to 25%, because with these prices, we wouldn't catch some of those amounts that are pretty high if somebody's trying to, trying to fix up. I mean, it'd be, you know, 260, almost $300,000 than, you know, in improvements to a house, you're not going to see it, and we wouldn't capture that. So that, we did look at these, even before we got these comments, and we lowered that 50% to 25% for that reason.
All right. Any other questions?
Is, is Ornsberg pipe necessarily a deal breaker when it comes to inspection, if they have Ornsberg pipe and it's in relatively good shape? Is that still okay?
I would say that there's any Ornsberg out there, it's probably installed decades and decades ago. Ornsberg, you know, the name comes from Ornsberg, New York, company that made it, which was a surprise to me. I always thought it was because the pipe had an orange color to it. But anyways, most of that pipe has deteriorated to the extent that it has no bottom, and it's probably currently leaking into the ground. So it's really important that we, that we identify Ornsberg and cause its replacement.
So if you have Ornsberg pipe, and it's in reasonably good condition, am I, would somebody be forced to replace it?
Let's say that there was Ornsberg pipe that, for whatever reason, was just installed a month ago, and it's perfectly fine, and it's good for, then they would get a certificate of lateral compliance.
You know, that's, that's, that's not a great answer, because Ornsberg pipe would never be installed in the last 40 years. If somebody has Ornsberg pipe and it's in reasonably good condition, would they be forced to replace it?
No.
Okay, thank you.
It sounds like what I'm hearing, though, is that the likelihood of Ornsberg pipe being in reasonably good condition is unlikely.
Yeah, that wasn't my question, though. It was, it was a straightforward question. If you have Ornsberg pipe and it's in reasonably good condition, would I have to replace it? Because I, because I know I have Ornsberg pipe, and I've had to replace it. But there were stretches of it that were perfectly good, too. And so I don't, it's, it's, it's a simple question. I just want to know, because there's a lot of Ornsberg pipe out there.
Yeah, staff's apology. We, we didn't mean to complicate the answer to your question. But as a, as a follow-up, we would, the city, I'm sure, would require replacement of the entire line, not just a portion of it.
Okay. By the way, I don't have a common lateral with other people, so. Just saying.
Good thing we'd come after you.
I replaced Ornsberg pipe, the whole house, or the yard. It's a bad product.
I, Michael, I appreciate your comments, and I, I share your concerns. You know, one, one observation that I made reading this is, let's see, the smoke test was done in 1998. I was 13. I now have gray hair, getting gray hairs. So why are we do, like, just playing devil's advocate, I, I believe, I truly believe that, you know, it's a responsibility to own property, especially if you're sharing common resources like a, a communal sewer line. And I, I understand the fairness argument of it. I understand that we cannot have, you know, raw sewage leaking out in the environment. And I also understand that this is really taxing for our Public Works Department. But reading this ordinance, I mean, this is a bitter pill to swallow for the people that don't realize that they're on a, a private line and are currently, you know, feeling the pinch with everything that's going on with the economy, you know, it's, it's, it's a little painful. It, it could be painful to people that have these lines. So just to play devil's advocate here, can you explain to me why we have to do this now?
It came about under a number of reasons in, in the recent past. One, just to be further in compliance with our permit on our wastewater treatment plant, because we, we have had serious INI situations where we've had to release sewage from the plant. It actually was overwhelmed by stormwater runoff. And that stormwater runoff, a good percentage of it is from these private lines, not the city lines. And so that's probably a primary reason. And a secondary reason also, just to take a closer look at it, was that River Watch lawsuit. And so again, we just want to make sure that we're in compliance, because that was a situation where the city had spent considerable money upgrading its sewer wa, or its wastewater treatment plant, I think somewhere in neighborhoods of $45 million. And that the way the law is written, it does allow somebody to come in and sue the city for noncompliance in the past. Kind of a, kind of a bad thing, considering our situation as we work forward. And so maybe that's the business model of that law firm, that's how they make their money. But it is a provision in, in the statute that allows for that. And so we're just trying to do all we can to mainly reduce our INI.
Okay, can you, can you give me a little bit more information about that? It's been a long time since I've, like, been brought up to speed on that. What, so if we didn't do this, what would happen?
If we, if we didn't adopt this ordinance, we still have our section under the, under our, under our sewer ordinance that has the responsibilities of those that, that own their private lateral or, or common lateral. It's just more reactive as opposed to proactive. So we would then come in when there is a breach, a sewer leak, or something goes wrong, or somebody comes in with a permit because their lateral doesn't, doesn't work, well, we're going to inspect that, and we find that it, that it's not in compliance, we're going to require that the entire line be fixed. And then we run into the problem where, as our 10 homeowner example of 10 parcels, maybe five of them don't know, and five know, and there wasn't a disclosure, or for whatever reason, they don't know. Well, then we're dealing with it, you know, after the fact, after an episode where the city has to come in then and require its replacement. We like, the staff likes the idea of trying to be more proactive, get people on a, on a maintenance agreement that then recorded, so that everybody has constructive notice upfront, it comes out in title when there's property transfer. It's just, just a little, I think it's probably a benefit to the public to know more upfront than all of a sudden be, be at the tail end.
Okay.
I guess therein lies the I guess therein lies the rub with our attorney, in that if one person is selling their one house with 10 lots, the city's going to compel all 10 lots to sign an agreement in order for them to sell their house?
Staff is currently going to be working with our city attorney to determine at what extent does the city have the ability to compel a property owner to enter into a private sewer lateral agreement. And so the question that Mona and I had was, well, if somebody comes in to, you know, for a building permit to affect repairs, then we have the ability to compel that person, that single person. Can we compel all the rest, all nine other properties? That's a question. When somebody, when a title is transferring, and they're required to have their certificate of sewer lateral compliance, does that allow us to compel them to enter into sewer maintenance agreement? There may or may not, we're not sure. I think our city attorney needs to research that issue. That is a big question. That's why we're asking for a continuance.
And I appreciate the transparency and the discussion and the delay of this, because, you know, this is, it's important as a city that, you know, we represent all these lots, all these property owners, these people, and that we, that everybody's treated fairly and with due respect to all the laws and regulations and the Constitution and all that good stuff. So I appreciate the transparency in that. Do you have, I mean, go ahead.
So I briefly reviewed this just for preparation of tonight's meeting, but I didn't have an opportunity to research or to give my legal input into this. And so that's why we're asking for the continuation. I specifically would like to look at the proposed maintenance agreement provisions and the sample maintenance agreement. But from my perspective, there's two separate but related issues. The first issue is, does the city have the authority to require private property owners to maintain private sewer laterals and maintenance? And the answer to that is yes. And we currently do that. And this ordinance is not going to change it. What this ordinance is going to do, and staff's intention, is to make it more publicly known so that there's more awareness and notice to current and prospective property owners that this is something new that you should, not new, but this is something that you should be aware of in Placerville. Maybe it's not an issue in other communities, but in Placerville, it might be. So conduct your due diligence. This is not any different than, for example, an adjacent sidewalk, or a tree in the public right-of-way that the adjoining property owner still bears responsibility for. The question is, how are we going to require a proportionate share of maintenance by property owners who share pipe? And so my specific task is going to be look at, is to be looking at the legalities of that, and to also make the ordinance as clear as possible for readers so that they're very aware of what their responsibilities will be. The intent of this ordinance is not to add a new obligation, a new responsibility, or additional costs. It's really to codify what the existing practice is. But I just want to make sure that we, of course, do that in the most legal way possible.
So the question, the follow-up question is, we won't, and this might be for the next meeting, but we won't be requiring people to sign a contract rather to acknowledge that that obligation exists, whether they like it or not?
Correct. So from a legal perspective, an agreement, I consider any agreement to be a contract because it binds you to some action or responsibility. But that's correct. It wouldn't be any specific action that's necessary immediately.
Just acknowledgement that they understand that that obligation exists.
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
So I just wanted to add that I'm looking at this from the other way. I have a good friend who got caught in this, and she owned a house of, she was number five at the bottom. And she got stuck with thousands and thousands of dollars. I do believe that there were a couple of folks who did not want to help her out, and I sent her to Pierre, and I think he was able to straighten out the situation. But we have a lot of it around here in Placerville, and I think it's because it hasn't been acknowledged through the years. And it's not, it's not fair, you know? And to be fair, we have to do something.
Well, that's a really good point, and therein lies, you know, the necessity to do this.
Exactly.
Even though it's kind of painful to do it, but it is not right if you're, the house at the, you know, where the joined, shared sewer line meets up with the city, that you get stuck with the bills from everybody else's sewage. I mean, that's not fair.
You get stuck with their sewage, too.
Right. And not only that.
Houses have been inundated with sewage because they're on the.
Well, and not only that, but every time her, well, she, it was a rental, but there would be a sewer back, she had to call a plumber. And it was not people in that house doing it, it was coming from elsewhere.
And it is a burden on our staff to try to be mediators in that type of relationship.
I just think this is a whole, this is a fair situation, and I think folks are looking at it from the, you know.
Well, it's a complicated issue.
It's a painful, again, a painful situation. I remember years ago when we tried to solve the public sidewalk problem, and I don't know that we ever solved it, except for the city to say, you know what, we'll just pay for the sidewalks. But people didn't want to, even, they said, no, it's not ours. Well, it was theirs, but, you know. So we just don't want to let that happen, I don't think, with this. It could be a lot more expensive than sidewalks.
Yeah. So another, an interesting point that you made, Mona, was that we already require private sewer lines to be maintained by the property owner. So this is not a new burden, this is just increasing awareness and transparency to property owners and potential property buyers. Is that a fair statement? Am I accurate in that? Pierre or Mona?
Yes, that's a fair statement. Because again, you're going to have disclosure, property transfers, it'll be in the title report, everyone will know. And then the certificate of lateral compliance, I think, and this is going back to Council Member Sarah Goza's questions about costs, because that's something always people are concerned about. Does this add any cost? I guess there's a minimal cost to that inspection. Basically, they're going to have the inspection done by a plumber. So there's going to be the cost of the plumber coming out and inspecting that line to determine its, you know, its condition. But the building official will be there, and that's just a $95 cost from the city's end. Of course, if it needs repairs and everything else, well, needed repairs anyway, regardless of this new ordinance.
Okay.
I have a question, maybe, this might be a Rebecca question as well, and that's, so as we, you know, are fixing our streets and our pipes in the street, I know we've run into some of these private lines, and we're like, oh, look at that. I mean, are we, is there any, is there any, what's the right word for this? Is there a way to try to retire some of these private lines and hook them into the public right away? I mean, to me, it just seems, one, very inefficient, probably the wrong word, but, I mean, I'm not sure why we, we shouldn't probably have so many private lines in a city. So I think that's the problem to begin with. So I'm just trying to see, and I know we're not going to rip up every road and take out, you know, it's only where we need to do the repairs, but is there a way to, you know, share some cost here or make it cheaper for people as we open up the ground?
You must have been in my head. We do have a way of doing that. So I will give a couple of examples. When we did the Upper Broadway Bikings Project, we actually did have Measure H money tied to that. It became apparent during construction that there was a private service to a building that had deteriorated beyond repair, and the way that it was discovered was by its connection to the main. We did have a discussion with the property owner. They understood the issue, they were emotionally committed to, you know, trying to find some sort of resolution. We had talked about a payment plan, et cetera. And then, you know, it was one of those situations where we did the project, and I was like, oh, well, what did the, you know, amount come out for that sewer service? And it's like, nah, we just rolled it in. It was the same crew out there, we already covered mobilization, we already in the street, it was no big deal, we just took care of it. And I asked, you know, where's the change order for it? And they said, yeah, it was minimal, so it actually would have cost us more money to track it. So there have been situations like that where we do try to be efficient, we do try to, you know, I guess it goes without saying, but sometimes it's helpful to reiterate it. You know, we all love this community, we take care of our businesses, we take care of our residents, we do our very best. And some days, maybe that isn't necessarily believed by all, but that is always the intent. So.
Thank you.
One follow-up comment, if I may, also, I think you mentioned, is there, how can we retire these service laterals? So if we have a common private sewer lateral, say, our example again of 10, the question is, how can the city then retain, take ownership? Well, if they do affect a complete change of that line, if that line is constructed to city standards, and we have then, the property owners provide us an easement, because a lot of times these lines are running cross-country in people's backyards, and there are structures over them and that sort of thing. But if we can get an easement, or move it out into the street, or something of that nature, but if it's actually reconstructed to city standards, the city will take over that line.
Thank you both.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from council? I will open this up to public comment. So if you'd like to comment on this, please step up to the podium.
Lauren A. French Senior, who will identify who has these lines? I'm here because I was told maybe, but I do not know that as a fact. I've been in a home since 2010, so it's been 12 years. But I've only heard from other people that we might be on a shared line, but I don't know this. Who's going to identify that? Did you not say there was 85 of these, sir?
Please address the council, sir. And at the end, at the end of public comment, we'll have staff answer questions that come up.
Was it not mentioned that there was 85 of these?
85 private lines, yes.
Who's going to tell me?
That's a great question. We'll have staff address it at the end of public comment.
And does this have anything to do with the size of the line? Say, from a four-inch to a six-inch?
All right, another great question.
Oh, no answer.
After public comment, we'll have staff address it. We don't do the back and forth with public comment, it's just, yeah.
This ordinance is important and necessary. I'm recommending, as a part of the frequently asked questions, the following should be included as a highlight that is in the ordinance, and it's some of the things you already brought up tonight. So what, the first question is, what is the private sewer maintenance agreement requirement? I think that's got to be highlighted in the FAQ area. There are 84 private common sewer systems in the city. If a property owner is a common, is on a common building sewer system, the property owners are required to execute, this is what it says in the ordinance, a private sewer maintenance agreement, and this agreement shall be recorded in the county, and a copy should be filed with the city. A certificate of lateral compliance is recommended for a common building sewer system, which will be valid for 10 years. If a property owner wants to sell their property as a part of a common building sewer system, a certificate of lateral compliance will be required. So that, it just explains it to the people, what's going on when you're on this. Also, there could be a question regarding what happens if a property owner does not want to sign the private sewer maintenance agreement? And I think Pierre brought that up earlier, going to investigate that. So I think that's important. Just want to let you all know that the cost of an inspection, really, when they run that camera through the line, is around $350. It's not $95, I think somebody mentioned, but they, I've had that done, and I've had, I'm on this, one of these lines, and I had to clean out down the system for someone that had trees growing into the system, and I had to clean it all out and maintain it and do whatever. But I didn't realize that there was this private sewer maintenance agreement available for me to get everybody on board with. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue Rodman, Placerville resident and member of the Measure H, Measure L Committee. This ordinance is much improved from the one in 2017. I think we can all agree that having sewer pipes, public or private, that allow us sewage spills or infiltration are not desirable. Because most sewer pipes are hidden underground, especially private systems, this ordinance is necessary to protect public health. While Measure H and L work to improve our public systems, private systems have to be a responsibility of the landowner, who may be unaware of any problems, as shown by the 1998 smoke testing. However, I do have some concerns with the current wording in the ordinance. In page five definitions, it says, main or sewer main, private ladders need to be six-inch diameter. There's no citation for this or why this diameter is specified. So I called my plumbing company and asked, and they said, for residential households, four-inch diameter is normal and meets the standards, and six-inch diameter requires too much water to push the waste through the line. The ordinance specifies that sewer inspections are needed whenever there is a sewer spill or property changes ownership. I think that's absolutely appropriate. But under section 17, 717-6, the certified certificate of compliance is required when any sewer lateral is over 10 years old. That's the majority of Placerville. Is the city prepared to issue notices to most residents that they need to get this certification and then follow up on that? With no evidence of a problem based solely on age, seems like a huge workload that may prove unnecessary. When the city installs new sewer lines, their expected life is 40 to 50 years. And under 717-7, obtaining certifications, page 11, item 3, small A and B. A, if residence does not meet code, replacement of the entire line is required. But B, commercial lines not meeting code, repair or replacement, or partial replacement is allowed. This is a double standard. If the problem is the same, the requirement to fix it should be the same. And the same page, still under 717-7, under capital B, why is the certificate only good for 10 years? And under 1717, 717-10, certificate limits, A, total replacement certificate, only valid for 10 years. Partial replacement certificate, though, the director determines the valid timeframe. And under 717-12, for HOAs, certificates only valid for 10 years. No rationale is ever given for any of these 10-year term limits. The first 10-year term limit is in 717-4 on page 3 in the definition of certificate of lateral compliance. This 10-year term limit is arbitrary and capricious. Any term limit needs to reflect the real expected life of the sewer pipe, dependent on the type of pipe material that was used. And those are my comments.
Thank you, Sue.
Good evening, Kirk Smith. I believe that the proposal is a substantial obligation and a new one. So before you come back to this issue, I would urge you to send out notice to each and every one of those 85 homes. They need to know. There's extraordinarily small numbers of those people who knew about tonight. When you read this agenda, who in heaven's name off the street would know what you're talking about? And how many would know that they're impacted? So just to give you an illustration, when this came up in 2018... So, just to give you an illustration, when this came up in 2018, I discovered that our property is part of one of those lines. To give you a specific idea, it starts from one end of Big Cut Road, goes all the way to the top of Sakamoto Hill, to the furthest point of Sakamoto Street, virtually to the end. On Google Maps, that's about 1,400 linear feet. There's 11 homes that have access. Now, our properties had plastic pipe, I'm sure. But the problem with them is the size, and I think backflow, whatever. The geology is complex. Soft girt in one part, then you've got Mariposa Slate, our neighbor has a gold mine, and then, little further down, you've got River Rock. And it's on a gorge, it's on a hillside, so it's expensive. In 2018, I asked an engineer, a plumbing contractor, to come in, and the estimate was somewhere between $200,000 to $300,000. Now, I don't mind, if I have to, paying my share, but how do I get these other folks to do it? And it's not going to do any good if it's just me doing my section. So you see, it's very complex. So apart from giving notice to every single person who's affected, so that you can get serious input, I would urge you to have a workshop, so we can answer some of these questions and get some answers. It's very important. And that's, and that's why, because it's going to be extraordinarily complex. So does that give you some ideas about what you're up against? I am surprised to run out of, have time left. I'm not used to doing that. And I am going to give you a break. But that's, that's, that's it. It's just, it's very complex, and I'm going to make a formal records request to get the names of those folks, so I can show you how few actually knew about this meeting, and a copy of the agreement. So, when you're talking about having us fill out an agreement, you should actually see what one looks like, as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
You actually only gave us 10 seconds back, so it wasn't that gracious.
All right. Any final comments? Last call? Okay. I'm going to close public comment. There were a lot of excellent and important questions that came up, so I want to take a moment to address those. Pierre, were you taking notes, or do you want me to kind of repeat some of the questions that I jotted down?
Yes, I was taking notes. And the gentleman that was concerned about, how can he find out if he's on a private common lateral, he doesn't know? He should first maybe come and, and come to the, either, either Development Services or Engineering. We both have a map book. It's comprehensive. It has detailed maps that, that identify those private sewer laterals, and what homes are attached to them. But that's not to say that there may be some out there that, that we don't know about. But we have identified 84 of them. And again, like I said earlier, we have 35 of those are under a maintenance agreement between the owners.
So, follow-up question to that, that came up. Can we proactively send a letter out to these folks and let them know that they are on a private line, and that we are working on an ordinance regarding a private sewer line? It sounds like you have that information in planning and engineering with the map.
Yeah, we've identified the properties. We know what the properties are, so we could put together, yeah, we could put together a notice that we could send to all those property owners.
Okay. All right. And then there were a couple other things that came up. Sue has some great suggestions. We always count on her to catch, catch the details. Can you speak to the four-inch versus six-inch lines, and the 10-year inconsistencies with 10-year terms?
Yes, we can certainly look at that. Basically, the size of that line should be based on the number of homes that are served. So I would think, I don't know if I, if I've seen in the map if there's any more than, usually it's 10, I think is the upper limit. And so if four inches is, is, can suffice, we can look at revising that. That was a good comment regarding the 10 years. I think that's what we saw in the examples that we used. We basically used the private sewer lateral ordinance from the City of Richmond and East Bay Mud. Both those jurisdictions are, are sort of in the same boat like we are. They have a significant amount of INI issues resulting from private sewer laterals. All those are very old communities, some of them, you know, built back in turn of the century, or the, you know, 1910s, 1920s. So, but we can look at maybe a more appropriate life of that certificate. Because say, for example, if somebody just last month replaced their entire private sewer lateral, that lateral should last decades. And so I could see where, maybe we, we should look at that, and have some justification for where that 10 came from. Another question, I think, came up regarding, why does commercial get a break as opposed to residential? We will look at that. Because we weren't trying to, you know, favor one type of use. It's basically to replace the line as appropriate. So we'll look at that as well. Appreciate those comments.
All right. Any other comments from council?
I, I like the idea. I know, Kara, you and I talked about, I like the idea of, of a workshop, especially with, if we're going to send out notices to potentially affected residents, just to give them more background, and quite frankly, I think it'll help myself, you know, wrap my head around this a little bit more, too. So, I know that, that means longer, because that would obviously require more time and more staff time, which, I know Pierre has tons of time on his hands, but, so I, so I understand that this isn't something that might not happen right away, but I do think that's a, I like that idea of just really giving the, the public a lot of information on this, because this is a significant, this will be a significant change.
Any other questions? All right. Or comments? No? Okay. So we are going to, well, Pierre, you're going to look at the, the legal questions surrounding the agreements, and then the 10-year amounts of time, and the six-to-four-inch pipe, and the difference between commercial and residential. So those are a couple points to look at. And is it, and is feasible that we can send a letter out to all of the residences that are affected by this, and let them know that we are considering this ordinance, and?
To, to meet our, if, if it's going to be continued in two weeks, that may be a little difficult. That's, that's a significant mailing.
What if it's continued for, I mean, time-wise, is, is it okay if it's continued for 30 days?
Well, and, and the other, the other part is, if you're going to try and do this workshop before you bring it back to introduce the ordinance, definitely we need more, more than two weeks, and...
Yeah, I was thinking, my, I mean, this is probably months, in order to get enough time to get a workshop on, on the, on the books, and get a mailer out, and then come back to us.
Yeah, I would think maybe you, if you want to do that, if you want to do the workshop, I would say to continue it, but not to abate certain...
Yes, staff would recommend that if it's the pleasure of the council to have a, have a workshop, where we invite all those property owners that are on a private common lateral that we know about, that you continue it off calendar.
Right.
And then we will, because, well, we, we already have all the exhibits. We have the template of the maintenance agreement. We have diagrams, and we can provide those at the workshop for, for the people that come.
Okay. What are the thoughts of the council regarding that?
Well, I always hate continuing things too far.
I know.
You know, I was just wondering about the possibility of having the workshop, I mean, not stopping the ordinance from moving forward, but having a workshop, educating people on what the ordinance is, why, and having, you know, coming in for the education. You know, I, I didn't, don't know how I necessarily feel like delaying the item. I mean, are we really not going to do a fair and transparent daylight? You know, we, we talked about all the positives, you know, about this. You know, I, I'd like to move forward with the ordinance. I'm, I'm in favor of having the workshop, and I think, yeah, it's, I mean, it's part of what we're talking about, daylighting this issue, a bunch, a whole bunch of people who probably don't even know they have this issue. So I'm in favor of the mailer and the workshop. I just would like to know, could we move forward with this, and have it as an educational workshop, rather than a precursor to moving forward with the ordinance?
Okay. Any other?
I, I agree with that. I think that's, I think it's important. Is it 85 laterals, or 85 homes?
It's, it's approximately 84 common sewer laterals, so that would be the finest serving more than one property.
Okay.
So this, that number isn't the individual private lateral from somebody's home to the city main.
Right.
Which is probably a thousand of them.
Right, no, I was, I misspoke. My apologies. But the, the, the common laterals, you're referring to just the common lateral, and not the number of residents that are served entirely by common laterals?
Correct.
Okay. So do you have, I mean, is that list readily available?
Yes.
Okay. It would seem prudent to me if we could send that out to all of those people, so they have the opportunity to comment, or, or hear what we have to say about this at our future council meeting. Is that reasonable? You said it was a big mailing, is it?
It'll be a big mailing. I mean, to make it worth the while, we probably would want to send those property owners then the map that delineates them, shows, you know, their neighbors that are also on that lateral.
Could we just post it online, and put a link to it in the letter?
We could do that.
That would be easier and less expensive, and less time-consuming, less folding.
Mm-hmm.
No. Let people don't have to elderly.
Okay.
Okay. No.
This is why we need the public. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I think we have to include all...
And you know, really, and I want to insert, too, that I, I think, I, I don't want to blow this out of proportion.
Right.
And I'm, I just don't want to see it go like to Facebook, and everybody's going to make all these ridiculous, you know, accusations and stuff.
Probably that's going to happen anyway.
Well, if we, if we do it quickly, and, you know, and, and really post what we're trying to do, I think it might calm the waters a bit. I don't know. But be, I, I just, you're digging.
I mean...
But I just think that the sooner the better. And I like Jackie's idea, just let's continue, but let's plan on the, it's more of an...
Yeah, I, I agree. I don't want to fold it up, and I do think it's important to move forward. At the same time, I do, you know, a lot of people don't read, you know, they don't, they don't get these agendas in their email, and there's no way for them to know that this is coming up. So I do think that we need to let people know. I don't know if we need to include a map, or just a quick letter that says...
I don't think we need a map. I think we just need...
That says, just wanted to inform you that you are on a public lateral, and we are considering this ordinance, and it will be considered at this date.
Right.
And your feedback by email or public comment is welcome and encouraged, or something very simple like that.
That's what I think, too.
We, we don't do back and forth, but, but please, feel free to email me directly, or email, you know, the city manager, or Pierre Rivas with any other comments.
I'll just say, I mean, I would prefer that we would do these, we would have the workshop first, and then we'd move forward with the ordinance. I mean, we did the testing in 1998, and it came in 2018, and now we're in 2022. So there's not as if, and we're not under like a regional water quality board, make notice of contamination, so if we go another three months, or whatever this might be, at least it gives that order that we would normally do one of these through. So I just think it's the more prudent course to give people the most amount of time and education as we go forward, as opposed to ipso post facto, and we've already, you know, passed something, and then we're going to educate you afterwards. And that, to me, it just, I don't think that's going to play very well.
But if they were, if they received a letter, making them aware, and had time to comment on the agenda, or on that item, and have time...
Then I would think, well, what's the point of the workshop? I mean, I, I just think you do the workshop first, give people the ability to look at what you get, and then you come back and you have the ordinance. And I understand we're going to get the Facebook stuff and everything else, but to the mayor's point, we're going to get that anyways. And the reality is, these aren't cheap things. I mean, these are, this is going to be expensive in some cases to do, so I, I don't want to mislead the public to think that this is just going to be a, a filing fee, and a, and a snake, you know, a, a, you know, $350 inspection fee, you know, that's, that's not going to be the totality of it, so.
Okay, well, can we get like a, a hand raise from council members on if you want to do just a letter and move forward, or if you want to do a workshop prior to the ordinance, or if you...
Well, okay. When can we plan a workshop?
Well, like I say, if you want to do the workshop, we'll need to go back and figure out a time when we can do it, and put that together.
And that's always a chore, just to find a day that we're all available, and that the building's available, and so...
I, I will say, however, we do actually have this month. I don't know if we could get to it by then. Hopefully we could. The 30th is a fifth Tuesday.
That would be getting a mailing out, and getting everybody notified.
Yeah, so that, that gives us three, one, two, three weeks to do that.
I don't know, I'm looking at staff. They're shaking their heads, no.
Mona, do we...
And I appreciate staff's feedback, because if staff says...
Staff certainly will try and get the workshop all squared away, and then, um, set, but...
That's right before Labor Day weekend.
Staff does not want to choose a date right now.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I hear that.
I think that's very fair.
And I, and I understand Councilman Sergio's reluctance to rush into this, and give people an opportunity to understand. At the end of the day, I don't see not doing this.
We're going to have to do.
And that's, you know, so, whether it's a, it was a post-education or pre-education, it's going to be education, and the only, the only thing, well, just thinking about this, only thing we can glean from having a, a workshop is that we might have more information to make a decision that might alter our process.
However, I think that those same people, given the oper, you know, the invitation, and the heads-up that this was coming up, would also provide feedback as well.
I don't think they get the same, we get the same feedback without a workshop.
Yeah.
I think the workshop would provide more information for them to understand what's happening.
I do, I, yeah.
And at the same time, I, you know, we've been working on this for, I don't know how long.
I think if we don't have a workshop, that we're inviting more trouble, really, and more, you know, people getting the wrong messages and stuff, so I definitely am in favor of it.
So are you thinking a workshop prior, or a workshop after as education?
Prior.
Prior?
Yeah.
Prior?
And I appreciate Jackie's comments, too, because I, I don't disagree with you, and in, in terms of full transparency, and kind of a process of, of public information, and...
No, no, I, I agree with all of those things. I agree with everything that we want to do. I just always think there's the reality of staff time, and getting things done, and I always try to be conscious of that also. I mean, there's, there's a way that we would love to do a long process with everything we do. You know, I'm, I'm just looking at the fact that if we go on the way we're going, where you say we're only going to be reactive to public health hazards, we're going to let these things happen, and then we're going to do something, and, and that's really not the way I think anybody wants to go about this.
Yeah.
You know, that, you know, we have a good plan to be more proactive, to prevent these accidents from happening. If you absolutely want to do that, I'll go along with you.
Okay. All right. I'm kind of, I'm kind of in the same boat. I feel like we would get good feedback from a letter, but I, I do think that this is significant, and a workshop would be helpful.
I just don't think that some folks are going to react to a letter, and, you know, I, I just...
Yeah.
Honestly, I don't know who's going to show up for a workshop, but we'll find out.
That's true.
Okay. All right. So we, we would like a workshop schedule. It doesn't have to be the fifth Tuesday of August. It can, you know...
Be a little later if we need to.
Yeah, it can, it could be after trip to Green, you know, talk to staff, you know, not, not way out. It sounds like you've got all the materials needed for it.
One question, too, regarding the workshop. I'm assuming you want this a scheduled council workshop? The other way we can do it is we can schedule it as a staff workshop, which doesn't mean we agendite as a city council, meaning you can still attend, but you wouldn't be putting it on, the, the staff would actually run it and put it on.
And you've had a lot of...
Two different options that we can do that way.
And you've had a lot of success with those particular type of workshops.
Yeah, I like, I like that.
We can do it either way.
I do like that. I also recognize that staff has limited time, and I wouldn't mind, you know, I mean, what do you, what do you think, with your experience?
It's going to take our time either way. It's going to take our time either way. I'm just saying, sometimes it's a little easier to schedule if we don't, if, if we don't have to schedule a council meeting. Do it as a formal council meeting.
Okay. And Pierre, Rebecca, do you have any... And Pierre, Rebecca, do you have any?
Well, I was just assuming that it was going to be a staff-conducted workshop.
Right.
Where, you know, the council members, of course, are invited, and any other interested parties, the H and L committee, P E C.
Well, we want to help you. I want you to understand that.
Yes, because it seems like it's just going to be.
And whatever we can do to help, just what we want.
Because I would think if it's more of a council workshop, we can just continue it and just, we can keep continuing it until we get to a point where we think we've satisfied public comments and council concerns.
That's true.
Yep.
So you can do it that way. But I was always under the impression that you want staff to hold a more formal workshop where we invite the public to come in, we have exhibits, we have materials, sample maintenance agreements and the like, diagrams and stuff. And we would have the booklets of all the private sewer, and we can go over everything with the public there.
Okay, I think that would be good. Could we do something like that? I mean, at our meeting and just have.
Oh, at a council meeting?
And people could come early and.
I think it would be better separate, unless we did it on a council meeting day.
That's what I mean. And then have it maybe earlier, an hour earlier, so that people could come.
Can people come here at four or three?
Well, I don't know. We.
We'll leave scheduling up to, I think, staff to kind of figure out what would work best.
I just think doing it, as Pierre has mentioned, as a staff workshop will be much easier to get it going and get it organized and set up and run.
Yep.
Not to leave the council out. Absolutely, we would like you there and, you know.
No, I meant staff handle it before the meeting starts. I'm just trying to eliminate another day.
Well, and we'll look at that. That may be an option to look at, look at, you know, prior to a council meeting, but we'll take a look at that.
Yep.
Okay.
I think that'd be too much.
And we will also let you know about it, so that we try to coordinate days when you're not out of town, so that you can be here if you would like to be, so.
Okay.
I don't think we need to be here, quite frankly.
That's totally.
I would like to be here, but.
I mean, I want to be here, but I mean, we're not going to answer the questions. Staff is, so.
I'll make a motion that we continue this off calendar and staff figure all these questions out. All right, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All those opposed? All right. Passing unanimously. Thank you, Pierre, for your hard work on this. Appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
It is an important, important issue.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. We're going to, we're going to take a five-minute break. We'll be back at seven forty. All right, we're going to bring the meeting back to order here.
We'll work it out.
Can you turn that, that distraction off? Are you watching?
Watching a commercial.
All right, we're going to bring it back to item ten point two. This is to introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance adopting the very high fire hazard zones in L R A, prepared for the city of Placerville as recommended by CAL FIRE, dated November seventeenth, two thousand and eight. And Mr. Rivas has this one as well.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. To give you a little background, California law requires that the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, CAL FIRE, to develop maps that identify very high fire hazard severity zones for potential wildland fires in the state of California. And local governments are then required by the government code, and that's section five, one, one, seven, nine, and that was attached to your staff report, to adopt an ordinance designating these zones in the city. Staff was unaware of that requirement. We actually found out about it when we were researching something with respect to what City of South Lake Tahoe was doing. And we found that they also, more recently, adopted the CAL FIRE map, and we're unaware. So we're following suit. So adopting this ordinance is required by state law, and it further allows the building official and the El Dorado County Fire Marshal to enforce the wildland interface fire protection provisions of the building and fire codes. And just so the council knows, we do currently do that. Any new house that goes, that's being built in the city is required to comply with the W O U I, which is Wildland Urban Interface Construction Standards in the Building Code. We already implement those. We also have our hazardous vegetation ordinance, and so we're already doing what the adoption of this map would do. So it's really just as a follow-up to have the map officially adopted by the city is required. So the currently adopted codes have been modified to increase fire safety requirements on items such as roofing, siding, attic, and foundation venting. These requirements affect new residential construction and have been part of the state codes for several years now. The Fire District has reviewed CAL FIRE's Very High Fire Hazard Severity Zones map for Placerville, and the Fire District concurs with the state's assessment. The map for the city is attached to your report, as is a pertinent state law. This ordinance would formally designate very high fire hazard severity zones in the city of Placerville. The state law requires them to develop these maps in accordance with the code, and that's what we're doing. It would trigger the additional building and fire code requirements, which we already do. The city also enforces abatement fire hazards such as dry, overgrown vegetation, and requiring fuel modification for meaning defensible space in accordance with the government code and through the city's hazardous vegetation and combustible materials ordinance that we adopted back in August of two thousand and nineteen. So this agenda item is presented to the council to correct an oversight that dates back several years. The city council has not previously adopted the necessary ordinance and map. However, city staff advises that the appropriate code provisions have been enforced in the past. The proposed council action will bring the city into full compliance with the government code. So with that, the staff is recommending that the council introduce, waive the first reading of the ordinance adopting the very high fire hazard zones in the local resource area, prepared for the city of Placerville as recommended by CAL FIRE, dated November seventeenth, two thousand and eight. And with that, I'll just state that staff is aware that CAL FIRE is updating its maps for the state, but we don't know when we're going to receive those maps. But with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
We would not see, when they update those maps, that we are in less of a fire zone, though, I think. Is that safe to assume?
I can't remember who I was speaking with when I was told that, but my understanding is they're going to increase the areas that are within the high fire hazard zones.
Okay.
Not lower them.
Do they have another, do they have another color other than red, or is that it?
I think you can see, there are some gray areas there that are not within the high fire hazard zones. That's the.
For now.
California, or the state, or the county fairgrounds and the surrounding commercial areas. And then there's another area, I think around Escaton, or that area is also not within a high fire hazard zone.
Okay, so just to, just to clarify for the public that may be watching from home, this does not change our building codes. We're already doing everything that we need to do in the very high fire hazard zone, correct?
That is correct.
This is just dotting our i's and crossing our t's here.
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Pierre? Any other questions? Sorry. I will open this up to the public at this time. If you have a comment, please step up to the podium.
I guess I'd like an explanation as to what the significance is, how we would be impacted by it. And when I looked at the map, I had difficulties figuring out. It looked like it covered all of Placerville. So how would it really work out, and what are the implications? Like, if you're in one of these high fire zone areas, what does that mean for you as a property owner? That would be helpful to figure out what the next steps are. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. All right, seeing nobody else jumping up, I'll close public comment. Pierre, can you address that? Would this have any implications in terms of, you know, fire insurance, or, you know, the building code's already up to speed, so there won't be any additional requirements on property owners in terms of?
Yeah, staff has received quite a few comments about, is this going to increase my fire insurance? And the answer is, is no. The insurance companies already use these maps and then use additional information, such as distance to a fire hydrant, the time, response time from a fire station. So there's, there are other factors. It's a little more fine-grained than just looking at the map. Typically, they'll start looking at the map, but there are other factors. And I understand that personally as a homeowner. Had to go through that, because I was on, I was rejected or dropped by my fire insurance, went on the fare plan, and then they said, you can come back. So, but it was based on a lot of those factors. And so it is more fine-grained than just these maps, but it doesn't change anything. And so to answer more specifically to what Mr. Smith was asking, if he had a vacant piece of property and wanted to build a house, and it's in a very high fire hazard severity zone, we're going to impose the W O U I building code requirements. W O U I meaning the wildland urban interface requirements. As for, I'm trying to think of what his second question was. We already, as I mentioned in my staff report, the city did adopt a hazardous vegetation and combustible materials ordinance. If you're within these very high fire hazard zones, you're supposed to comply with that. And I've seen that section fifty-one, one eighty-two of the government code specifies defensible space requirements, you know, the hundred feet, all those different things. And so we already have that in our code, and we're already, you know, enforcing that on a vigorous way currently. So, again, there's no change, and we're already implementing the requirements.
And that the W O U I building standards is already in effect for all new construction in Placerville?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Bringing it back to council for a motion or further discussion on this?
We don't need a workshop for this, do we?
I don't think, I don't think we need one for this one.
Okay, good.
I do want to say W O U I, though.
I like, we don't get to say W O U I that much at a city council meeting.
I would move the item.
Okay.
Do we? Do you want to talk?
Second.
Public comment?
We did.
Yes.
All right, we have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember, now.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda is twelve point one. And this is to adopt a resolution regarding the auditing and review of our cannabis businesses within the city. And Mr. Morris has his staff report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council. As you know, our two cannabis businesses, well, one actually completed their first year of business in June. The second, I believe, finishes theirs in September. It'll be one year that Sacred Roots has been open, and Chucks has been open for a year this past June. Both have done well in terms of meeting our guidelines, our regulations. We have had no problems. I've spoken to staff who have dealt with them. Police department has had no issues that they've made aware, been aware of with these. And so everything has gone very smoothly. However, we want to keep that going, and we think it is important to continue to follow our ordinance in terms of the things we need to do in the regulation inspections and auditing of these facilities. So the purpose of tonight's agenda item is to, first, it was going to be to renew our agreement with HDL. However, I found out that it actually expired last October. But they have not been doing a lot for us. We've used them for their background checks, but the background checks are paid for separately by the employees and the businesses, so we don't, we don't pay for those. So we've used them for that, and we will continue to do that. They have a very good portal system set up where the employee or the owner can go on and on this portal, pay for the background check, and get that information back very quickly through them. And so we don't, all we do is get notice that they've completed the background check, and we approve it, and then they send us an I D card. So that has been ongoing. But the other things that I think are important, and now that we've been through one year, we can, we can look at these, is the audit and then the biannual inspection. And this is what was recommended by HDL and was set up within our fee structure. I will let you know that because it was in the first year, we only did one inspection last year instead of two, and we did not do the audit last year because we felt it was too soon. Let's get through a year of business, and then we'll look at them. So we have, at least we're in the process, maybe it's already been done. We refunded a portion of their permit license fee from last year. So eighty-five hundred dollars for the audit and twelve fifty, I think, was the number for the, for the inspection, for one of the inspections. We do plan to do all of those this year. So I will note that if you look at this agreement, HDL actually raised their costs quite a bit. The audit went from eighty-five hundred to ten thousand. I sat down with my staff and reviewed the hours that are built into that license fee, and we were able to reduce those down to a point where it did not increase the fee despite the increase in HDL's fee. And all of my staff was comfortable with us doing it that way, so that the fee is just slightly less than what it was last year. So we felt good about that. I checked with Mona. We felt that we did not need to bring that back to council to re-adopt that fee since it was less than what it was last year. And so what you have before you tonight is to adopt a new agreement that will allow us to do the inspection, the audits, and then there's also some time in there for consulting services with HDL. If we don't do that, we don't spend it, so we don't spend the money. So we've also set up a system through finance and our staff to track the time that our staff puts into that, so that we, it will go directly towards the permit fees that they are paying. So we think we've got it set up going into this next year, working with HDL right now to get the inspections, the initial inspection set up, followed by the audit right after that. I think that's it for this. If there's any questions I can answer, happy to do that, so.
All right, thank you, Keith. Any questions, with staff? Questions?
I had a couple. Have we, have we put this out to bid or gotten other quotes for these services? Are there other companies that provide these services, given the price increase?
We have not, just because we've been working with them for so long. But I do think that, I would recommend that this year we go forward with this, but I do think that we should explore. I was a little bit shocked by the cost of the audit. Me and our Director of Finance, Dave Warren, both were shocked by that audit. And I do believe there's others out there that could do those audit services, do them for cannabis businesses for the future, so.
Okay. And does our ordinance require the two audits per year, or could we do?
It's one audit per year.
Okay.
Two inspections.
And that's required in our ordinance?
I believe the, I know the audit is, the inspections was a recommendation from HDL.
Okay.
When we set up, set the whole thing. I'm not sure that the, that two inspections are in the ordinance, actually. I'd have to go back and look at that.
And do you think that two inspections is necessary?
You know, I questioned HDL on that. Their comment was, to me, was, they, in their other business they're doing, they consistently done that. They feel it is necessary because it's better to catch something that they're doing. And they might not be doing it on purpose, but something that they're doing that may be in violation of our ordinance, it's better to catch that early on than having to go back later and catch that. But I, again, I think maybe doing two this year and then exploring next year whether or not we felt there was value in that after we, because we really, we really only done to this point, we did the initial inspection when they opened up, and that's all we've done. So it'll be interesting to see what comes out of this inspection now, and if everything is clean on that. We could always cancel the second one. We don't have to do that.
Okay. I'm just thinking, you know, restaurants are only inspected once a year.
Right.
And there's a lot that can go wrong.
Sure.
I mean, you can, like, you can make a lot of people sick if.
Yeah.
Your refrigerators aren't the right temperature, which, you know, I mean, so, and I'm not sure how arduous or time-consuming these are for the businesses, but if two's not necessary, then it's, it's an added cost, and it, you know.
Yeah. And I agree with you. I did question that. I left it in here for now. If you'd like to pull it out, we can do that now, or we can wait and see after the first inspection. I mean, if there's a number of issues that come up in the first inspection, and we'll get those corrected immediately, but I would still think we maybe want to do that second one. But if they're all clean in these inspections, then maybe it's not a big deal, and we don't need to look at the second one.
Okay. And then one other question, and this is just like a wording thing, but on And then one other question, and this is just like a wording thing, but on the, on the resolution, the first whereas is, "The state of California has approved the commercial marijuana business and has adopted emergency regulations for cannabis businesses." That was the only place emergency regulations was anywhere in the staff report or anything? So it, I would just, was a little?
Yeah, that should be changed. That's, that's, I, I pulled this from the resolution when I adopted it last time. They were emergency regulations at that time.
Okay.
I don't believe they are now, so I can, I can, if you want to pull that word out.
Okay.
That, that would be appropriate.
Okay.
Yep.
Sounds good. I will see no, no one else.
I have a question. About the auditing. So I'm going to direct this to Dave. Is it a specialized auditing that has, that has to be done? In other words, that you, you couldn't have it on your books, or I, I just?
It's pretty extensive.
I mean, I don't want to give you another job, but I just.
Yeah, it's, it's.
I'm curious.
It's specialized because of the product that they're selling, and I think there's, you know, they're going to determine the amount of samples they need to take from a statistical standpoint to come up with a determination whether or not their revenue estimates are reasonable or not, what they reported to us. And knowing the industry and the size of the shop, the volume of traffic are the numbers that they're presenting reasonable, and that's something I don't know. And so that's where their expertise really comes into account.
I imagine they're auditing inventory in and inventory out and sales and dollar figures.
Well, I know when I went up to, when I was on that trip with the Chamber, and we went to Washington, and, you know, we had all the, when, when I was first introduced to all this cannabis stuff, they just kept talking about how highly regulated they were and all the reporting that had to be done, and I was just kind of curious to know why.
Yeah. And after reviewing, excuse me, a couple of years of reports, that's something that we could take a look at. You know, is it something that staff does eventually, or should we continue farming it out?
Cannabis businesses also have unusual cash handling.
They have what?
Unusual cash handling practices.
Oh, yeah, right.
Because of how banking works for these businesses, so that, you know.
If they're ever recognized.
I can see that requiring specialized.
If they're ever recognized by the feds, it might solve a lot of problems.
Yeah.
But who knows when that's, when, and, yeah.
We want to mention along those lines, so I believe both of our cannabis businesses are not paying their taxes by cash. They're both using checks. Is that correct, Dave?
Thankfully, yes, they're paying with a check.
Yeah. No wheelbarrow.
I, I, I agree with Mayor Taylor in the, the number of inspections and the quantity and the, and all that. I think that, you know, if they, if they can pass the muster and they, and they're doing well, I think it's important to not overburden them, but just, you know, you know, help them, help us.
Well, and, and, and I really feel like, like you've said, and you talked, that law enforcement works with them. They're going to be able to, I think, to detect if something, you know, or get a little idea of something.
I will mention one thing that we're going to review as part of the inspection. I've, I've talked to Chief Renn about this a little bit also, is they've requested, currently they're required to have 24-hour onsite security.
Oh, that's right.
And the question's come up whether or not that is completely necessary, if they, their building's secured, et cetera, et cetera. There's certain, certain stats where maybe we may be able to, and our ordinance actually allows me to lessen that requirement if I feel it's appropriate. So we're going to review that as part of the inspection. There's some, some criteria that HDL has for looking at that. Main one is, is anything visible from, through windows from the outside of the store? And, and if not, then there's a good chance that that security can be relaxed a little bit for that. So we'll take a look at all those issues through the inspection process and figure out, you know, what we can do to work with them and, and help them.
Okay. Yeah. That's, that sounds good. I mean, just generally speaking, it's, the, the state generally is not real easy to do business, and anything that we can do to make it, you know.
Yeah.
Less, less of a hassle is, I think, good and wise. Okay. So we'll, we'll open this up to a public comment. I see no one stepping up. We'll close public comment and bring it back to the council.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution with the struck-out language on the emergency regs.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a first and a second. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Taylor.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Councilmember Nell.
Aye.
All right. 12.2. This is to adopt a resolution regarding six new trash bins. And Pierre, back to you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just to start with a little background, the city receives $5,000 annually from the Department of Resources Recycling and Recovery, known as CalRecycle, through their beverage container recycling payment program. And this program is to assist cities and counties with reaching and maintaining an 80% recycling rate for refund values beverage containers. So under the Public Resources Code, the California Beverage Container Recycling and Litter Reduction Act authorizes CalRecycle to distribute funding to eligible cities and counties specifically for beverage container recycling and litter cleanup activities. The city has utilized these funds in the past to purchase dual trash slash recycle receptacles along Main Street and to fund cleanup activities along city streets and the parking garage. City has been replacing its single bin trash receptacles to two bin trash and recycle receptacles throughout the city to allow for the separation of trash from recyclable materials, such as those that we have on Main Street and in the downtown area. The city's parks currently do not allow for separation of beverage containers and other recyclable materials from its trash bins. They're just single bins. And since the parks are probably a source of considerable volume of beverage containers, the city will assist the state's goal of attaining 80% recycling rate for all California refund value beverage containers. That includes aluminum, glass, plastic, and biometal. The city is in receipt and has in its general fund grant funding received from CalRecycle an amount of $5,000 for the fiscal year 2021 and another $5,000 for the fiscal year 2122 for a total amount of $10,000 in available funding. So staff is recommending, based on staff, development services staff consulted with Mr. Director Zeller with Community Services, since he manages the parks, so he chose the garbage receptacles. I don't know where they're going to be placed, but I'm sure if there's more detailed questions about that. I know staff received some questioning from someone, I can't remember who, about where they're going to go. I'm sure Mr. Zeller has a good idea of where they will be placed. But with that, staff is recommending that the council adopt a resolution that would approve the purchase of the six, of six two-bin trash recycle receptacles from Bilson Outdoors LLC for a total amount not to exceed, and we got it right down almost to the penny, $9,999.29 for placement within city parks, and then two approving a $10,000 budget appropriation from the general fund for unassigned fund balance for purchase of said trash recycle receptacles. That concludes staff's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Pierre. Any questions on this?
I don't have questions. I'll just make some comments.
Okay.
When I first saw these bins, I about had a heart attack. I was like, "This is the third type of bin we're going to have throughout the city." And I called Mr. Zeller and asked him why, and said, "Shouldn't we just pick one and stick with it?" And he said, "This is the one we should start replacing and, and doing that with." Because when you look at our parks, we have the old wood bins, which get watered daily and don't always hold up that well. We have the, the green metal ones, which apparently have their own issues, because I was like, "We could just put a blue one next to the green one." And so, yeah, so the overall plan is to keep using these funds to upgrade them with this type all over the city, as being the most durable and whatnot. And as far as placement goes, I had, I had input on that, too. You know, there's some of our parks that are much more popular. All of our baseball fields, you have a lot more cans and bottles and things like that. So I was just going to ask that, you know, staff look at our more popular parks, knowing that we will eventually replace them all, but put them in our busiest areas to start with.
Those are good suggestions.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
Nope. Did I open this up?
I think it was interesting, though, that Jackie, we met and we were talking about this. Tell them about the recycle.
Well, back when I was on Park and Rec, the Boy Scouts had come, and they wanted to put the recycle bins out at Lions Park, and we said, "That's a great suggestion. Could you bring it back and tell us who's going to empty those recycle bins?" And we never saw them again. And I had said, since I've spent a lot of time out at Lions Park, I'm pretty sure that we don't even have to worry about emptying those recycle bins anymore, because I sit and watch people actually disassemble our dumpsters to take out all the recycles. They go through all of the garbages, probably a couple times a week. I'm like, "I actually don't think that emptying recycles is going to be a big issue for us." That's what I told Patty.
Can you imagine they disassemble them?
Did I open this up for public comment? No? Okay. I will do that at this time. Oh, we're going to have comments.
Okay, this is public comment. This is public comment.
Okay. Thank you.
All I have to say about this one is, go for it. This is a really great idea, and these look like they're going to be really durable and last a long time, so.
They're ugly.
Good plan.
Thank you, Sue.
That's funny.
Okay. We'll close public comment.
I'll move that we approve the purchase of these six two-bin trash recycle receptacles and approve a $10,000 budget appropriation for said.
All right. We have a first and a second. Can we get a roll call? Aaron, please.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Taylor.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Councilmember Nell.
Aye.
Thank you. 13. Council reports from other agency meetings, and we'll start with El Dorado County Transit Authority.
I took Jackie's place and got to be on transit again. It was, I don't think we had anything to, it was mostly closed session, and that involved something that we don't share with the public, so there wasn't anything really to go.
Nothing to report on.
All right. El Dorado County Transportation Commission.
We had another Zoom meeting.
We did. Continued to Zoom.
All of it, all of us were there, and what did we talk about? Oh, mostly the trip to Green.
Right. Trip to Green was the big, was the big topic, and I think we more than covered that, so there's not a lot to, else to elaborate on there.
Okay. Laughco.
Talked to, we established a committee to respond to the grand jury report, and we, in closed session, took one step closer to getting an executive officer.
All right. CACOG?
Uh, we had a, hit our policy meeting, just really a trail update and an update on the Sacramento County transportation measure. That's about it.
Okay. One, one thing, going back to the EDCTC meeting, we did program a bunch of CMAC funds for some great projects, including Placerville Drive.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And Canal Street, which desperately needs new sidewalks and improvements, and then other local projects as well in the county and some regional projects involving CACOG and so.
And those were, those were significant grants.
Yes.
That was great.
Yes. Okay. Pioneer.
We've been dark.
Okay.
Yeah, I have nothing to report.
Okay. That's kind of a pun. Was that a pun? A joke?
Dennis, Dennis, I have one question. Being on that board, are they, are they reviewing our bills, or you, or is anybody keeping track to see how we're doing?
They are constantly, the bill, the dollar amount is set, what, what people are charged. It's more about what we work on as the purchasing side and making sure that we're purchasing and using various techniques to purchase electricity at the, at the cheapest amount while meeting the objectives of the organization.
Wouldn't that, I mean, wouldn't that eventually, isn't that the plan, that we would?
Reevaluate.
We would spend less by going with Pioneer versus?
Well, right now, the average is 6% less in the city.
It is?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was, okay.
Right.
Because I can't tell.
Right. It's, you know, you can't. But if, if you ask them to evaluate your bill, on average, it's 6%.
Okay. Thank you.
Which is something.
Yeah. Yeah. Better than poke the eye.
Fire State Council.
Yes, we had a very lengthy, or they had a very lengthy meeting that I observed, and I keep adding my, like, I'm a member of it, but they do ask me to, and, but they're just going gung-ho in trying to, you know, solve, but what they, I think one of the things that I would like to report on is that the $10,000 that the city has agreed to give them this year, they're taking applications for folks in the community that would like some assistance. We are not, for, to clear their property. And it, it was brought up that we can't, I mean, some of these properties might take the whole $10,000.
Right.
So they agreed on maybe putting a cap of $1,000, and then they could assist with 10 people. So that's kind of the big, the biggest thing that happened.
All right. Two by two. We have not met. And the COC?
The committee did meet. Basically, the, the biggest thing was there was a couple of, of funding opportunities, information that they got out, but that's about it.
Okay. Any requests for future agenda items? Item 14? No? None? Okay. That brings us to 15, which is to receive and file the police report. Chief Renn, would you like to highlight anything?
Yes, Mayor, thank you, and good evening. The biggest thing is to offer our appreciation from the police department, to the, to the city council, and to the departments and our allied agencies that came out to support National Night Out. It's, it's real convenient to, to the community in these neighborhoods to bring the government to them instead of having them come to the government. And out of that, several of the neighborhoods identified some, some neighborhood concerns and issues, and we've been working the past week on addressing those and have had some positive results. Stats are pretty status quo right now. I know there was some, some comment earlier in the day about transits in the creek. A while back, we brought in California Department of Fish and Game biologists to, we actually brought them onsite and showed them the creeks and the concerns that we had, and got guidance and direction from them about codes that were enforceable. Since that time, we have been enforcing those, those codes. If you're in the creek causing damage, we will arrest you and put you in jail. And that, that's pretty well-known amongst the population who you would see frequent those areas. So we've, we've made an impact with that. The problem is, it doesn't take them very long to create a lot of damage. So if we're not, you know, if we're absent for two days and you go back, it's, it's a mess again. So we work on strategies to try to abate those issues again. We will, we will arrest anybody that's causing damage to our waterways, so.
Okay.
And I'll answer any questions that you guys may have.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Chief? All right. The fire station report. Chief Cordero, would you like to highlight anything?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would just highlight that we did have an engine company that went down as part of our strike team to the Oak Fire Down outside of Mariposa, and then upon their return, we sent another company up to the China Fire, which is adjacent to McKinney. I just got word during the meeting, they're going to be released tomorrow, but likely reassigned to a different fire, so. And again, we'd like to, we're happy to participate in the National Night Out. We had our new Accelerant K-9 out there. It was a big hit with the, the community. That was a great thing to see. And, you know, for the medic units, you know, as I've reported, we're down one unit, and you'll see that reflective in the stats. The crews, it really picked up in, in call volume. There's a reference made at a meeting I was at a couple of weeks ago, where the rest of the ambulances are really just kind of feeling what medic twenty-five lives every day, so, and that's a pretty true statement, that those numbers are beginning to reflect it. But overall, for our ambulances, there was about a two hundred and fifty call increase for those folks last month alone. So, it's, it's been busy for the crews, but they're hanging tough. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Question?
No, but I just, I wanted to add to one more report, if we could.
Quick question.
Yeah.
For the chief. Is there any movement on staffing, staffing back up the forty-nine medic unit?
So, the Diamond Springs Fire Board this afternoon actually voted to enter into the termination of that contract, which means they're moving forward on, on canceling that contract, although that opens some doors for the JPA, where we can look at some different alternatives, because we've been kind of stuck.
They finally made a decision, huh?
Yes. That was made this afternoon.
All right. Good. Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief?
No, you answered it, because my question was going to be on, on the, the medics, so.
And then Patty, you wanted to just make a quick?
I just wanted to ask Mr. Zeller about the goat project and how I know they're, everybody's been talking to me about the goats, and I just wanted to get a little report, if I could, Terry.
Sure. The, the goats have already gone through Gold Bug Park, and they've moved on to, they're at Lower Main right now, in that area. If you remember, the first three major areas we had were Gold Bug and Lower Main and Lyons Park. They're already done at Lyons Park, so they've, they're on the last of the three priority projects that we identified in the Phase One. They also have three other properties, the Fair slash Rayloir Drive area, the Wharf and Duffy Park, and they've already concluded at Duffy Park. So, they are moving through quite a bit, and our tree service companies that were on the Phase One are working their way through Gold Bug Park right now for the masticating and the thinning of the canopy. So, if you want to see what some of the finished work looks like, you can head up by the stamp mill up there and see. They've, they've moved through that pretty quickly, so we've got a lot of good progress coming on.
So, are, did it meet all your expectations?
I was hoping that they would eat a little bit more of the blackberry. They, they ate all of the leaves off of it, but there's all the brambles still, but we're going to see if we can't get that masticated.
We have to have a talk with them.
I do like seeing those goats. I'll open this up to public comment on any of the items under fifteen. Nope. Seeing none?